Good morning, everyone. I'm glad to see you all here this morning. I am pleased to report that we have a quorum. There are 292 elected town meeting members, and the quorum required is 147. Our town clerk, Sarah Haskell Aruda, has informed me that we have 203 members present at 9:08 a.m. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance...
Will you please remain standing for just a moment of silence? At this time, let us bow our heads in a moment of silence to honor the memory of those who have passed since our last meeting: former town meeting members, former board and committee members, and all those who have served the town of Dartmouth. Thank you. You may be seated. So, good morning, and thank you all for being here to serve as the legislative body for our town. We have important business ahead of us today, and I'm confident we'll have a productive day and a productive meeting. A few housekeeping items before we begin: there's no smoking allowed in the school or on school grounds. And if you haven't done so already, please silence your cellphone or place them on vibrate. So we should all check ours, right? So let me tell you what our plan is for the day. We have 27 articles on the warrant. I expect that we're going to have healthy debate, and I also expect that we're going to finish today. We will plan to have a one-hour lunch break around noon. If we are close to finishing at that time, I may ask you to stay and complete the meeting. Before Article 10, the Long Range Planning Committee will give a brief presentation about their ongoing work. This context may help inform budget decisions. While you will learn about the process and future opportunities for input, there will be no questions taken on the long-range plan today. For Article 9, I will hand the gavel over to Attorney Anthony Savastano, who will preside over the meeting. The article includes a vote on the salary of the town clerk, and, as she is my sister, I will step aside to avoid any perception of impropriety. As many of you know, I'm going to read the title of each warrant article. I will recognize the sponsor, who will summarize the article for us. A motion will be made and seconded by town meeting members. The finance committee and select board will be recognized for their recommendation, and then the floor will be open for discussion. If you wish to speak, please raise your card so I can see you, and I will give priority first to members who have not yet spoken on the article or on an article. Please wait for the microphone before speaking. Please rise, state your name, and precinct number each time you speak. Ask one question at a time, then return the microphone. You may be recognized again for follow-up. All questions are addressed to me, the moderator. One-on-one debate is not permitted. We do not cross-examine other town meeting members or officials. Only persons recognized by the moderator may speak, and you may not yield your time to another speaker. There are no speaking limits, but please be brief and avoid repetition. If a point has already been made, consider whether it needs to be said again. This body has a longstanding tradition of respectful discourse. We assume all participants are here working in the best interest of the town. Please focus on the issues, positions, and points of view, and avoid referencing individuals by name. We are here to debate ideas, not people. If you wish to end debate, raise your hand and say "I call the question" or "I move the question" when you're recognized. A two-thirds majority is required to close debate. If that motion passes, we'll vote immediately on the article. Any proposed amendments to the main motion must be in writing and legible. Town meeting members must be seated in this front section of the auditorium. I will indicate if more than a majority... They must be seated in the front section of this auditorium. If you're seated in the back section, your vote will not be counted. If you are not a town meeting member, you are welcome to sit in the sections on the opposite side of the aisle. Voting will be done by a show of hands unless otherwise required. I will indicate if more than a majority is needed for passage. If you believe I've made an error in announcing the vote, you may stand immediately. If seven members challenge, we will conduct a teller count. Teller counts may not be challenged. Once I call the next article, the previous vote can no longer be challenged. Helping us from DCTV today are Peter Chase, Mike Menez, Dan Maderis, John Silva, Todd Migliacci, Jess Gove, Dan Ferguson, Kyle Silva, and Quincy Antunes. DCTV is broadcasting this meeting live. Also, we have tellers sworn in, appointed by me and sworn in by the town clerk. So let me introduce to you the people seated next to me onstage. Immediately to my left is Town Council Anthony Savastano. Next to him is Town Clerk Sarah Haskell Aruda. Next to Sarah is Chris Vitale, our Assistant Town Administrator. And on the end is our Acting Town Administrator and Director of Budget and Finance Gary Carrero. I now invite our Select Board Chairperson Heidi Brooks to introduce the members of the Select Board with her today. You may need to turn on your mic.
Hello. Is it on now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haskell. I am Heidi Silva Brooks, Chair of the Select Board. To my right is Christopher O'Neil. To my left, Stanley Mickelson and David Tattelbaum. Sean McDonnell has an appointment, and he will join us as soon as possible.
Thank you. We are also joined by nine volunteers who serve on the Finance Committee, devoting many hours to budget discussions and reviewing today's warrant articles. I now invite the Chairperson Bob Govan to introduce the Finance Committee.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I'd like to introduce the members here. To my far left is Teresa Hamm. Next to her is Carrie Possins. Next to me is Janine Simmons. To my right is John Souzer. To his right is Phil Lentz, and then at the end is Bill Bowles. I'd also like to thank all the members for the hard work this year. I'd like to thank Gary Carrero for all the help that he gave us. But I'd also like to thank Donna Fernandez, the Town Accountant, who literally gave me answers in minutes when I asked her questions. And also Elizabeth Marcus, who does a great job in our minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we continue, I'd like to recognize Bob Govan, who is stepping down after eight years of service on the Finance Committee. On behalf of town meeting, Bob, I want to thank you for your dedication, your thoughtful guidance, and your contributions to the town's fiscal health. So, thank you, Bob. Okay, with that, I'd like us to get started. So I'm going to turn the preliminary motions over to our Town Council Anthony Savastano. Mr. Savastano?
Moved that the meeting note the correct call of the warrant and the lawful posting in return of service thereon, that the moderator is hereby relieved from reading each article in its entirety, and is allowed to refer to them by title and number, that any motion to amend Schedule A by increasing a line item must include a reduction of the same amount from another line item, that the moderator is hereby allowed to make up...
I don't want to make them up.
To take up action on any of the several articles out of numerical sequence, as she may determine, and that a teller count need not be taken on motions requiring two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths vote, and that the moderator may declare whether the motion passes or fails.
Thank you very much. So do I have a motion? Thank you. And a second. Second. All in favor of the preliminary motions, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The preliminary motions pass at 9:17 a.m. All right, here we go. Article 1, Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget. Mr. Baker Smith.
All right. Good morning. Thank you. The first article is the administrative budget for the Community Preservation Committee. The statute allows for up to 5% of projected annual revenues to be set aside for administrative costs. For the CPC, that might be legal fees. It might be consultation to help the committee in its determination and review of proposals, those sorts of things. The budget that we have put forward here is for $35,000. Over the years, that really historically has met our needs, and any unspent funds at the end of the fiscal year go back into the unrestricted reserve for commitment to future projects. So as it stands, the $35,000 is actually about 3.3% of our projected revenue, and that's been quite sufficient. So I move that the town approve this article.
Great. Do I have a second, please? Thank you. Any discussion on this warrant article? Are we... I'm sorry. I need the Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board, please.
Unanimously recommended this article.
Thank you. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 1 passes at 9:18. Article 2. Article 2 is Community Preservation Committee Fiscal Year 2026 Community Housing and Historic Preservation Reserve. Mr. Baker Smith?
Yes. The other requirement of the statute is that each year, at least 10% of projected revenue be set aside for each of the three purposes: housing, open space preservation, historic preservation. And a town can either put into reserve or commit to a project at least 10% for each of these purposes. What we are recommending is allocating $110,000 for the community housing reserve, $110,000 for open space reserve, and then $35,000 for historic preservation. The difference in the historic preservation reserve commitment is in anticipation of two project recommendations that you will see next on our agenda here that, if approved, would bring the commitment for historic preservation to the $110,000 level. In our approach to planning for the fiscal year, we have the October...
The process and future opportunities for input, there will be no questions taken on the long-range plan today. For Article Nine, I will hand the gavel over to Attorney Anthony Savastano, who will preside over the meeting. The article includes a vote on the salary of the town clerk, and as she is my sister, I will step aside to avoid any perception of impropriety. As many of you know, I'm going to read the title of each warrant article. I will recognize the sponsor, who will summarize the article for us. A motion will be made and seconded by town meeting members. The Finance Committee and Select Board will be recognized for their recommendation, and then the floor will be open for discussion. If you wish to speak, please raise your card so I can see you, and I will give priority first to members who have not yet spoken on the article or on an article. Please wait for the microphone before speaking. Please rise, state your name, and precinct number each time you speak. Ask one question at a time, then return the microphone. You may be recognized again for follow-up. All questions are addressed to me, the moderator. One-on-one debate is not permitted. We do not cross-examine other town meeting members or officials. Only persons recognized by the moderator may speak, and you may not yield your time to another speaker. There are no speaking limits, but please be brief and avoid repetition. If a point has already been made, consider whether it needs to be said again. This body has a longstanding tradition of respectful discourse. We assume all participants are here working in the best interest of the town. Please focus on the issues, positions, and points of view, and avoid referencing individuals by name. We are here to debate ideas, not people. If you wish to end debate, raise your hand and say "I call the question," or "I move the question" when you're recognized. A two-thirds majority is required to close debate. If that motion passes, we'll vote immediately on the article. Any proposed amendments to the main motion must be in writing and legible. Town meeting members must be seated in this front section of the auditorium. I will indicate if more than a majority -- they must be seated in the front section of this auditorium. If you're seated in the back section, your vote will not be counted. If you are not a town meeting member, you are welcome to sit in the sections on the opposite side of the aisle. Voting will be done by a show of hands unless otherwise required. I will indicate if more than a majority is needed for passage. If you believe I've made an error in announcing the vote, you may stand immediately. If seven members challenge, we will conduct a teller count. Teller counts may not be challenged. Once I call the next article, the previous vote can no longer be challenged. Helping us from DCTV today are Peter Chase, Mike Menez, Dan Maderas, John Silva, Todd Migliacci, Jess Gove, Dan Ferguson, Kyle Silva, and Quincy Antunes. DCTV is broadcasting this meeting live. Also, we have tellers sworn in, appointed by me and sworn in by the town clerk. So let me introduce to you the people seated next to me onstage. Immediately to my left is Town Council Anthony Savastano. Next to him is Town Clerk Sarah Haskell Aruda. Next to Sarah is Chris Vitale, our Assistant Town Administrator. And on the end is our Acting Town Administrator and Director of Budget and Finance, Gary Carrero. I now invite our Select Board Chairperson Heidi Brooks to introduce the members of the Select Board with her today. You may need to turn on your mic.
Hello. Is it on now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haskell. I am Heidi Silver Brooks, Chair of the Select Board. To my right is Christopher O'Neil. To my left, Stanley Mickelson and David Tattelbaum. Sean McDonald has an appointment, and he will join us as soon as possible.
Thank you. We are also joined by nine volunteers who serve on the Finance Committee, devoting many hours to budget discussions and reviewing today's warrant articles. I now invite the Chairperson, Bob Govan, to introduce the Finance Committee.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I'd like to introduce all the members here. To my far left is Teresa Hamm. Next to her is Carrie Possins. Next to me is Janine Simmons. To my right is John Souzer. To his right is Phil Lentz. And then, at the end, is Bill Bowles. I'd also like to thank all the members for the hard work this year. I'd like to thank Gary Carrero for all the help that he gave us. But I'd also like to thank Donna Fernandez, the Town Accountant, who literally gave me answers in minutes when I asked her questions. And also Elizabeth Marcus, who does a great job in our minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we continue, I'd like to recognize Bob Govan, who is stepping down after eight years of service on the Finance Committee. On behalf of Town Meeting, Bob, I want to thank you for your dedication, your thoughtful guidance, and your contributions to the town's fiscal health. So, thank you, Bob. Okay, with that, I'd like us to get started. So I'm going to turn the preliminary motions over to our Town Council, Anthony Savastano. Mr. Savastano.
Moved that the meeting note the correct call of the warrant and the lawful posting in return of service thereon, that the moderator is hereby relieved from reading each article in its entirety and is allowed to refer to them by title and number, that any motion to amend Schedule A by increasing a line item must include a reduction of the same amount from another line item, that the moderator is hereby allowed to make up --
I don't want to make them up.
To take up -- I have a typo here.
I don't want to make them up.
To take up action on any of the several articles out of numerical sequence, as she may determine, and that a teller count need not be taken on motions requiring two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths vote, and that the moderator may declare whether the motion passes or fails.
Thank you very much. So do I have a motion? Thank you. And a second? Second. All in favor of the preliminary motions, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The preliminary motions pass at 9:17 a.m. All right, here we go. Article One, Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget. Mr. Baker Smith.
All right, good morning. Thank you. The first article is the administrative budget for the Community Preservation Committee. The statute allows for up to 5% of projected annual revenues to be set aside for administrative costs. For the CPC, that might be legal fees. It might be consultation to help the committee in its determination and review of proposals, those sorts of things. The budget that we have put forward here is for $35,000. Over the years, that really historically has met our needs, and any unspent funds at the end of the fiscal year go back into the unrestricted reserve for commitment to future projects. So as it stands, the $35,000 is actually about 3.3% of our projected revenue, and that's been quite sufficient. So I move that the town approve this article.
Great. Do I have a second, please? Thank you. Any discussion on this warrant article? Are we -- I'm sorry, I need the Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board, please.
Unanimously recommended this article.
Thank you. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article One passes at 9:18. Article Two. Article Two is Community Preservation Committee Fiscal Year 2026 Community Housing and Historic Preservation Reserve. Mr. Baker Smith.
Yes. The other requirement of the statute is that each year, at least 10% of projected revenue be set aside for each of the three purposes: housing, open space preservation, historic preservation. And a town can either put into reserve or commit to a project at least 10% for each of these purposes. What we are recommending is allocating $110,000 for the community housing reserve, $110,000 for open space reserve, and then $35,000 for historic preservation. The difference in the historic preservation reserve commitment is in anticipation of two project recommendations that you will see next on our agenda here, that if approved, would bring the commitment for historic preservation to the $110,000 level. In our approach to planning for the fiscal year, we have the October Town Meeting. If there's any adjustments that we need to make in our reserve commitments based on project recommendations or changes in revenue projections, we make the correction at that meeting. So I move that the town approve this warrant article.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 500.
And the Select Board.
Select Board recommended this unanimous, 5-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Two? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Two passes at 9:21. Article Three, Community Preservation Committee, DCTV, renovations phased to -- Mr. Baker Smith.
Yes. The property that the DCTV is currently located in was -- this is historic preservation project. That property was originally built in 1894 as the town hall for Dartmouth, and over the years has been used for a variety of purposes, different services, offices, community purposes. And presently, I think for the last 20-plus years, DCTV has occupied the property. There has been, in 2016, an assessment of the capital needs for that building, certain renovations that were needed. And since then, DCTV has been doing some of the repairs and improvements. But this is to prepare to tackle on some of the bigger cost items, like the exterior shingling and things like that, and some window and door work that needs to be done, as well as some interior work. To prepare for that, the town is proposing to secure the services of an architect with historic preservation experience to prepare bid documents, confirming first the assessment that was done in 2016 to see if there's been any changes in the existing conditions of the property, and then prepare the bid documents so that the town would then be in the position to seek contractors. This is -- I want to emphasize, this is a phased project. We should expect that with the bid documents prepared and then going out to bid, indeed, then there would be the need to actually pay for the work to be done, and at that time, we would see if there's any proposals brought forward. So I move that the town approve this article.
And do we have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 500.
And the Select Board, please.
Select Board, 5-0.
Fantastic. Any discussion on Article Three? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Three, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Three passes at 9:23. Article Four. Community Preservation Committee Gravestone and Wall Restoration at Joseph Davis Cemetery. Mr. Baker Smith.
Okay, thank you. The Joseph Davis Cemetery is situated next to Lazy Boy on Fons Corner Road. It's something that I often drove by, never knew it existed. But it's been in existence since the late 1700s and is in need of important restoration work. So there are about 200 and some gravestones in that cemetery, all of which could use cleaning. And there's a method of cleaning that's been tried and, I think, found successful in the town of Westport, which cleans the stones without any further damage to these old stones. There are about 69 gravestones that are either damaged. They might be off their pedestal, or they -- some are completely off and sitting in the corner of the graveyard. They will be repaired as part of this project. And then there's a portion of a dry stone wall that has been destabilized, I believe, by some trees and roots, and that wall will be repaired, so it's stabilized. So in the end, the stones will be cleaned up, the stones will be repaired, and the wall will be repaired. So I move that the Town Meeting approve this article.
And do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board recommendation, please.
Unanimously supported this article.
Okay. Any discussion on Article Four? Right there, please.
Jim Costa, Precinct Four. Will the cleaning of the stones be a continual thing? How long will this last?
Mr. Baker Smith, could you?
That's a great question. I do not know how long that process will last. I don't know if Judy Lund is here, and if the moderator would recognize her if she is here. Judy has the expertise on this particular aspect.
If Mrs. Lund is here and would like to speak, I'd be happy. Okay. Over there, could we get a mic to Mrs. Lund, please? Thank you.
Judy, you'll need to come up here.
Do you want a mic?
Oh, I see. Sorry.
I've got a mic here. Thank you. Well, you did a fine job. The one thing I would add is this is a former town cemetery, and it's right next to the big rock that says "Welcome to Dartmouth." And I think if you welcome people to Dartmouth, you don't want to look at the cemetery right beside it and see that it's in trouble. But to answer your question, this is a cleaning that should last many years. It needs -- the lichens have been accumulating, some of them since 1792, and it's time that we did a little something about this cemetery, which is a welcome to this town.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article Four? In front here.
I just want to add that I've been --
Could you please -- I need your name and -- thank you.
My name is Arthur Gerard, Precinct Two.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard.
I've been by in Westport, and I've seen the cemetery they did. It's immaculate. It really looks great, and I highly recommend that we vote for this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gerard. Any further discussion on this article? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Four passes at 9:28. Article Five, Appropriation from the Cemetery Sale of Lot Fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article funds the sale of cemetery lots. It will provide the funding for the cemetery purposes in accordance to a Mass General laws.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Brooks? And seconded?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board recommendation, please.
5-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Five? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Five passes at 9:28. Article Six. Establish fiscal year 2026 maximum spending budget for the revolving funds. Mr. Carrero.
This article allows for a maximum amount of money that can be spent in various revolving accounts. The Recreation and Park Revolving Fund allows monies to be carried over year to year and allows the recreation and park programs to be self-supporting. The Library Revolving Fund permits the library to use the revenue from fees and charges from lost and damaged materials to replace and repair them. Cemetery Revolving Fund allows the cemeteries to capture cemetery-related revenues that would otherwise go into the general fund.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks, are -- will you make this?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board recommendation, please.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Six? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Six, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Six passes at 9:29. Article Seven, Recent Borrowing Authorization. Mr. Carrero.
This article rescinds the authority to borrow previously authorized, unissued debt from prior years, as detailed in Warrant Article Seven.
Thank you. Mrs. Silver Brooks, are you making this motion?
Motion to move this article.
And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends 800.
And the Select Board, please.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Seven? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Seven, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Seven passes at 9:30. Article Eight. Article Eight is the acceptance of the Capital Planning Committee Report and funding of the fiscal year 2026 capital plan. And what I think I'm going to do is I'm going to go down, and I'm going to read the totals, and like when we do the full town budget, if you have a question, could you please call a hold, and we'll get your questions answered, okay? So Dartmouth Police Department, total is $65,867. Dartmouth Public Schools, $50,000. Annual Control, $65,000. DPW, $100,000. I'm sorry, DPW Sewer Enterprise Fund. DPW Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, $400,000. And do I have a motion on this? If I ask for a motion? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 500.
And the Select Board.
Unanimous.
So since I'm not hearing any holds, do you think we're ready to vote? Or do we have -- you have a question?
Nathan Silver, Precinct Six. Just have a couple of questions. Question number one is, will any of these capital requests result in future operational cost increases? And if so, what is the magnitude of those costs?
Mr. Carrero, is that something you could answer for us?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So typically, when we purchase vehicles, you know, there's ongoing maintenance, routine oil changes, brake jobs, and then also any work that needs to be done for transmissions, motors, any kind of routine maintenance that you would have in your own vehicle. Typically, on -- like if we were purchasing software, that's an ongoing maintenance each year that we would have. But on these vehicles, there will be ongoing maintenance that's built into the budget under their repair maintenance for vehicles on each one of the individual budgets.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Is this on?
It is now.
Of the items, what was the -- do we have any display available for what capital requests were made that did not make the list? And if not a full list, what is the magnitude of the capital costs that were requested by our departments but not able to be funded in this year's budget?
Mr. Carrero, is that something you can answer?
I can pull it up in two seconds.
Thank you. Would you answer that? Yes.
So the total requests, when departments go in front of CIPC, they're vetted in different priority levels, priority one, two, and three, and then so on and so forth for projects that are not as critical. So in fiscal '26, what was presented to CIPC was in capital one -- excuse me, in level one requests, $8.1 million; level two requests, $9.3 million; and then level three requests, $429,000. So just in the first three priorities, there were $17.9 million in capital requests that, you know, were requested. Out of that, we were able to fund, obviously, $600,000-some thousand. But keep in mind also, at the last town meeting, we funded almost $9 million in -- excuse me, $7, $8 million in capital items because we had certified free cash that allowed us to do that. So as we look at projects and go to CIPC, there may be -- and CIPC is looking at this -- maybe other solutions that we need to come up with to fund these articles, short-term borrowing, and in combination with free cash that we get certified.
Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Silver? You need a mic, so let's get the mic. That's okay. I'm happy to have the question. They're just going to --
So with -- sorry, Nathan Silver, Precinct Six. So with the amount of capital requests that are being made, and the fact that we have a AAA bond rating, our borrowing rate would be significantly less than the cost of construction escalation over time. So is there a reason why we're not pursuing short-term borrowing now to beat the escalation? So construction escalation is on the magnitude of 3.5% to 4% projected into the future, whereas our borrowing rate for the AAA bond rating would be on the magnitude of under 3% probably. So it's literally costing us more money to defer these projects into the future than it is to borrow now and get them done under the current rates of the current construction cost.
So, Mr. Silver, I'm going to allow him to answer it if he has an answer. We're starting to stray pretty far away from what's in front of us.
Okay.
This is kind of a second. It's another meeting. I'll allow him, if he has an answer, to answer it, and then I think we need to go back to the Article Eight, if that's okay, please. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So on the -- as I mentioned, just mentioned, CIPC met over the course of this last go-around. We -- the committee understands that the town does have the borrowing capacity to do so. We're looking at alternatives, as I just mentioned, to do a hybrid approach for borrowing and a combination of free cash to do exactly what you had mentioned, the Speaker had mentioned, to mitigate the cost of inflation, but yet enjoy the AAA bond rating that the town currently has.
Thank you, Mr. Carrero. Any further discussion on Article Eight? Are we ready to vote on Article Eight? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Eight passes at 9:36 a.m. Article Nine, I am going to step away and hand the gavel over to Mr. Savastano, and I'm sure you will treat him with the same respect you treat me.
Article Nine. Heidi Silver, you want to make the motion?
Yes, a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And the Select Board recommendation?
Unanimous.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee voted 5, 4, 0 against and three abstentions.
And I recognize Gary Carrero.
Yes. This article sets the town clerk's salary and stipends for all elected positions for FY '26. A 3.9% salary increase is proposed for the town clerk and was presented as comparable to other town clerk municipal salaries and union salaries.
Any discussion on this article?
Jill Lentz, Precinct Nine. Why does the town clerk say FY '25, 0 and '26, 0 when it's in our budget difference in our -- on our paperwork? Am I just not reading it correctly? The top line on the screen, I'm sorry.
I think we just messed up on the PowerPoint. Sorry.
Yes, over here. Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Tripp, Precinct Seven. My only question is, I've been on town meeting, this is my third year coming to June meeting, and my issue is if salaries in the town are going up more than salaries in the private sector, how is that justified, guys? I mean, we have mayors that make less than some of our town clerks or accountant people doing paperwork in offices. And then we have people in this town that I know for certain that run around like a chicken with their head cut off, trying to keep all the services going, and they make far less, and they're at a lower pay grade. I don't understand.
Gary, you on it? Handle that? I'm not sure I understand the question.
So is the question -- is the question --
The question is, you're lucky if you can get a 3% raise these days. Based on any evaluation, what makes us so outstanding in our town hall that we're at 3.9? I don't get it. We're going broke, guys.
Is that a question?
Do you want to respond to that? She's just making a statement. You can respond to it if you want to. You don't have to.
The only thing I would say that, you know, when we do -- we're doing a class and comp study coming up in the very near future, to remain -- try to remain competitive with other communities. What we're seeing is that we're kind of at the low end of that, and believe it or not, we're looking at other communities that are, you know, a little bit higher. So in order to retain and recruit employees in a lot of these critical positions that we have, some opening, I mean, we're looking at the DPW with 14 open positions, police department with some open positions. We have to remain competitive, so in order to do that, we use other communities to find those sources of data. But we are having a professional service coming in to do that, so that we remain competitive, we're able to hire those employees that we feel can do the positions that we're looking for. But again, this is what's out there now and what we're seeing as far as a trend.
Yes, sir, over here. Yes, sir, over here.
Jim Costa, Precinct four. Can you, can you throw out a couple of communities you're comparing it to?
Sir?
I'm sorry, could you, I, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, could you, uh, throw out a couple of communities that you're comparing to, to state the, uh, to get those wages?
Isn't that up to the company that you hire for the comp study? Chris?
Yeah, if you give us a couple of minutes, we can give you an idea of a couple of our comparable communities. You know, I will note that the last time we did our classification compensation study, one of the things they look at is identifying those communities for us. So the last time we finished the study was 2019, so, you know, we would want to make sure through this new study that those, those are still the same comparable communities. But if you give us a second, we can pull up a few for you, for the example.
Yes, sir, over here.
Hi, Doug Roscoe, Precinct seven. Um, just in terms of the com, comparables to private sector, uh, just look Bureau Labor Statistics, wage growth in the country over the last year, 3.8%. So it's about on track with that. And I think looking at some of the collective bargaining agreements that have been settled in the, in the Commonwealth, coming in around three and a half percent. So I, to me, this is right on track with that.
Ma'am?
Hi, everyone. Laura Stone, Precinct eight. Um, I just wanted to note, in the way that we respond to the town clerk position, a, all staff, for the most part, in collective bargaining and across town departments are receiving a cost of living increase at about the percentage that Mr. Roscoe just noted, around 3.5. The only reason that we are discussing it on town meeting floor and why everyone's position doesn't get debated is because we still, in the town, voted to make the town clerk's position an elected position. So we find ourselves debating whether someone should receive a salary, and our fabulous town clerk sitting up front has to sit here through the process. Um, so it's a cost of living increase, like many are receiving, and I just wanted to note that, just for the peace of mind for how we process this experience.
Sir, down here.
Brian Thomas, Precinct four. It seems the Finance Committee had a five, four, three vote, I believe?
Five, zero, three.
Five, zero, three, okay.
Five, four, and three against. When he said four, it's.
Oh, three, I'm sorry. Oh, five, five, four, zero against, and three abstained.
No, five, sorry.
When they said five, four, that's not five, number four, it's five, F-O-R. Five in favor.
Yeah.
Zero against, three abstained, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So why did the three abstain?
Okay, um, the, the people abstained had, uh, different reasons. Anybody want to speak to this? They abstained. Okay.
Need a microphone? Mr. Bowles?
I abstained because of my personal.
I don't think the mic's on. On the top, slide it towards you.
Sorry about that. I abstained because I have a personal relationship with the town clerk, and I felt it would be very inappropriate for me to vote on her salary.
Anybody else?
Um, move the question, do I have a second? All those in favor? The motion passes, so now we got on to the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion? Opposed? Motion passes at 9:45. Melissa, we need you back. I'm not as good as her at this, so. I strive, but I don't succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Salvastano. Okay, we're on to article 10. I got it. Article 10. No, we are not doing article 10 until either after lunch or as our last warrant article. So on to article 11. So you see that we're going to skip the budget for right now, that we, like we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, okay? So we're on to article 11, please. Article 11, Funding Sewer and Septic System Betterments. Uh, and I have Mr. Carrero. Would you like to talk to us about that?
This article provides an appropriation for debt service and associated costs related to sewer and septic system betterments. This article is voted on each year.
Thank you. And do I have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion. And a second, thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation, please?
Finance Committee recommends six, zero, zero.
Thank you. And Select Board Recommendation, please?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on article 11? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of article 11, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 11 passes at 9:46. Article 12. Funding Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero?
This article self-funds the operating expenses and indirect costs for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. Mrs. Silverbrooks?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second, please? Thank you. Uh, Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends six, zero, zero.
And the Select Board Recommendation?
Unanimous.
Any discussion on article 12? Are we ready to, yes, right here. Please? Thank you.
Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct eight. Um, I just have a question with all the enterprise funds, just because the solar net metering, metering credits are in different places, and I just wonder where they're supposed to be.
Okay, let me see if we can get you an answer to that. Mr. Carrero, can you talk about the, the metering credits?
Well, in order to receive the credits, we have to actually include it as an, uh, almost like an expense so that we receive those credits. So they're in different, obviously, they're in different spots and, uh, different parts of the budget. You'll see them also in the general fund piece of the budget. Um, it's just how they're divvied up, uh, and the allocation for each one of those departments.
Do you have a follow-up?
May I follow up?
Of course.
Um, on DCTV, it, it, and in Waterways, it showed in revenue rather than in the budget section.
It showed in the what section? I'm sorry.
It showed in revenue section.
In the revenue rather than the budget section?
Tim, do you want to speak on that?
Mr. Carrero, do, is there someone that wants to speak to that other than Mr. Carrero? Who was it? Mr. Barber, do you want, would you like to speak to this? I can't see you. There you are.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, Timothy Barber, Director of Public Works. So all I can say is the, the net metering credits are, uh, a budgeted, operational budget, um, item that's, that's, that's funded through the rebate from the, from the solar. So it, it's still, it's still an operated, an operational budget. That's why it's not considered a revenue.
May I follow?
Sure.
I understand that, that's fine. I guess my question is, in Waterways and DCTV, should those credits be moved into the budgeting section?
That, I can't answer.
I, I think, uh, so I think she wants to know why they're accounted for differently in each section. I think Mr. Chase would like to speak to this. Mr. Chase?
Uh, Peter Chase, sorry, can't really leave this area, but I think what it is, is Tim's just showing it as an expense in his lined-out budget, where in my budget, it's just in my expense line item. So he's also getting some revenue in, and I'm getting some revenue in from it, but we have to pay it out in our operating expenses. Uh, Tim just lays it out in his presentation, where mine's in the, just my expense line item completely.
Thank you. Did you have a, is that good?
Yeah, it just didn't clarify it. What happens is I.
Go ahead. She can speak.
It is in different places.
Yes.
And just for the sake of understanding, when you are reading all of these, if there's a consistency, it does help.
Yeah, I think each department has, I understand it probably puts together.
So I guess they can do that.
Yeah, I do. Any further discussion? On the aisle, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Bruce Lighter, Precinct two. I just have a question on definition. In Articles 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16, there's a separate item listed as town overhead.
Okay.
What does that mean?
So let's see if we can get you an answer. Mr. Carrero, can you speak to the town overhead?
Sure. Um, so each one of the enterprise funds, we're allowed to charge back overhead, uh, to the general fund. And what that means is, uh, I'll give you an example. Um, you know, the town accountant produces invoices that we, that, uh, the staff in that office, uh, does for the enterprise funds. The collector, for instance, collects water bills, sewer bills. So we're able to charge a portion of those expenses back to the enterprise funds as the, uh, indirect costs. That's the general definition of indirect costs.
Follow-up question?
Yes.
But aren't we paying salaries for all those people that do all that billing anyway? So isn't it like a double dip?
No, because, uh, for instance, on the, um, collection side, we collect those on the general fund piece of, part of the, part of the budget. So it's two separate, two separate accounts, if you will, two, two separate buckets, if you will. So when we, when we do that, we have to charge back, we're allowed to charge back under law, those expenses, mostly related to salaries, back to those, uh, enterprise funds. Because of the duty is being done through the general fund. The actual, actual task.
Mr. Lighter, do you have a follow-up question?
Last, last, last one. Isn't that increasing the amount that town pays in tax, has to raise in taxes for, seems like a duplicate service going on?
No, it, it doesn't increase the amount of taxes, it increases the, uh, essentially the fees in the, in those particular, uh, general, the enterprise funds, because we're charging back those expenses from the general fund over to the enterprise funds.
So, uh, can I try and rephrase what you said, and you can tell me where I'm wrong? What I'm, what I think I'm hearing you say is, it's the way that, um, the services that are provided for the accounts, for the areas that are serviced by an enterprise fund, it's the way that their, um, expenses are charged to them essentially, otherwise they wouldn't be being billed for people sending out bills for water and sewer. Is that right?
Correct.
It's, it's an accounting mechanism by which there, the expenses are allocated to the appropriate.
Enterprise.
Kind of account or enterprise fund in this, in this. I don't know if that clarifies. Okay. Doesn't look like it. Uh, any, any follow-up questions? Anything else? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of article 12, please, uh, I'm sorry, article 12, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 12 passes at 9:53. Article 13, Funding Water Department Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article self-funds the operating expense and indirect costs for the Water Department Enterprise Fund. The Finance Committee recognizes the need to provide clean water and the costs associated with that process.
Thank you. And, uh, Mrs. Silverbrooks, you're making the motion?
Motion.
And do I have a second? Thank you. And Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends six, zero, zero.
Thank you. And Select Board Recommendation, please?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on article 13? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of article 13, raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 13 passes at 9:54. Article 14, Funding Sewer Department Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero?
This article self-funds the operating expense and indirect costs for the Sewer Department Enterprise Fund.
Mrs. Brooks, you're making that motion?
Making a motion?
And do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends six, zero, zero.
Thank you. And Select Board Recommendation?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on article 14? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of article 14, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 14 passes at 9:55. Article 15, Funding Dartmouth Cable TV, DCTV Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero?
This article self-funds the operating expenses and indirect costs for DCTV Dartmouth Cable Television, uh, Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. And Mrs. Silverbrooks?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second? Thank you. Uh, Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance recommends seven, zero, zero.
And Select Board?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on article 15? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of article 15, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 15 passes at 9:56. Article 16, Funding Waterways Management Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero?
This article self-funds operating expenses and indirect costs for the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. And, Mr. Silverbrooks, I got a motion and a second? Thank you. Thank you. And Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends six, zero, zero.
Thank you. And Select Board Recommendation?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on article 16? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 16 passes at 9:56. Article 17, Appropriation for Use of Stabilization Funds for Opioid Legal Settlement Receipts. Mrs. Silverbrooks?
Yes.
So the town is, we are seeking the sum of $435,000 from the opioid legal settlement stabilization fund for fiscal year 2026. The last time that we requested, so right now, I'm going to put on my DART, which is the Dartmouth Advocates for Addiction Recovery and Treatment hat, I'm the chair of that committee. The last time we came before you was two years ago at this time, and we asked for $80,000. Since that time, we have funded a number of things, and we have worked closely with the school department, the police department, our youth advocate, and the Dartmouth libraries to determine the best use of opioid settlement funds in Dartmouth. Part of that, uh, triage of work with the opioid settlement can be education, recovery and treatment, and prevention. We're focusing on education and prevention. To that end, with the money that you appropriate to us today, we will be contributing to the Dartmouth PD's overdose task force that goes out, um, after they have been notified that someone, a resident of Dartmouth, has had an overdose, and they go out to work with that individual and their family. We're funding that program. We're funding programs for the school department. One is Wayfinder, a social emotional learning tool, which is a digital platform for discussion purposes for students in the high school, uh, to connect with healthy choices. In the future, we will be looking at that program and seeing the success of that program, and should it be expanded. We're also purchasing a number of vape detectors for the bathrooms at the high school. Uh, vaping is a gateway into experimenting with other substances, so it is something that DART feels, uh, is good use of our funds. This is not an aha, got you of anyone, including today. If you vape in the bathrooms, the alarm will be sounded. This is not a got you for anyone, it's an opportunity for high school personnel to work with the students, to talk to them about why they're vaping and what they're vaping, and alternatives, um, in their life. We're also working with the school department to extend, expand their club offerings, that would be clubs at the high school, in addition to, um, programs at the middle school for after-school. One of the deterrents that students have to participating in clubs is that they do not have transportation home afterwards. If they miss the yellow bus, um, at the end of their normal school day, they may be unable to participate in after-school events because they have no other way to get home. So the funds that we're seeking will also support busing at the end of those programs so that all students who are interested in participating in clubs and activities will be able to do so. We feel that's another opportunity to give our young people options, healthy options of participation. The public libraries, we are vetting a series of books so that they can develop a recovery The public libraries, we are vetting a series of books so that they can develop a recovery resource library. Now, the, the titles in the recovery resource library, we feel confident that it is not the user who may be going to the library to seek out such information, although there will be information there for them. But it is the family members who are dealing with someone that has a substance use addiction issue that may be looking for resources. And this would give them an opportunity to find opportunities for resources to address their concerns. And finally, we are in the process of hiring a substance use program coordinator, which would take over all of this work. Now, the program coordinator's program, salary will be 100% funded by the opioid task force in its first year. Each year after that, we will have the town commit to 10% of that salary, and in 10 years, it would mean that the entire salary of this individual would be paid for by the town. That gives us the opportunity, over time, to expand this position from completely dealing with the demands of the opioid settlement funding to more opportunities to work with other groups within the town and pick up some other opportunities to support town initiatives. That is not something that, that the position can do when the position is solely funded by opioid settlement funds. We're hoping all those things together do not come out to $435,000. What we're hoping to do is see you again in FY '28. So we're hoping to make this money stretch over a number of years.
Thank you. So you've moved this?
And now I put my Select Board hat on and move the motion to the floor.
And do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And Select Board recommendation?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 17? Right here, please. Yes, please?
Fred Dabney, Precinct 5. Just a question, how big do you recognize this problem to be overall, the schools?
Thank you, good question. Do you have a sense of the magnitude of this problem within the school currently?
Currently, the issue with vaping is an issue that the high school has brought to our attention, and something that in the future, we're monitoring to see if it expands itself down to the middle school. But right now, it is the number-one issue that the school department has at the high school level. Again, looking at vaping as a gateway into experimenting with other substances.
Thank you. Right here, please. And I see you over there.
Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct 8. I just want to thank the committee for all their hard work. This has been remarkable to help our community. And I watched the warrant article explanation, and one thing that Mrs. Brooks neglected to mention that the group is covering are boxes, and I forgot what they're called.
Yes.
So maybe we could, you know, because that's Narcan that is available to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Figurito, yes. Additionally, our money will supply Nalox boxes, which are boxes that look very much like the AED boxes that you see in municipal buildings. And the Nalox box will hold a number of naloxone doses. Naloxone doses will reverse the effects of opioid. Should someone appear to have overdosed on an opioid, if they have not, delivering Narcan will not harm them. If they have, Narcan is a nasal spray, much like Flonase, and the spray goes into the brain and attaches itself to the receptors and negate the opioid that has been released into their brain and brings them to. I will also note that now, any person that is giving an opioid narcotic after surgery should also be receiving through their pharmacy a dose of Narcan. Because they're, they're finding that there are individuals that may not use the prescription as prescribed and may find themselves, or their family member may find them, in need of administering Narcan. Narcan simply gives an individual another chance to find recovery and to be alive. Thank you, Mrs. Figurito.
Thank you. And I think I had a, okay. Any further discussion?
I think there's another one.
Right here, please.
Hi, Kevin Murphy, Precinct 8. This stabilization fund, is this a use-it-or-lose-it proposition?
Great.
And my second question would be, after the funding runs out for an employee, could this kind of be morphed over into the youth advocate umbrella that we already have existing in the town?
Great questions. Let's see if we can get you some answers.
I'll answer both questions.
Sure.
Um, the funding will run out in 2038. We receive funds annually. It is not a use-it-or-lose-it. There are many different uses for opioid settlement funds in every community. New Befford receives a different structure of money and has a different opportunities in New Befford than we have in Dartmouth. And we're trying to be fiscally responsible so that not only are we asking the new substance use coordinator, program coordinator, to take over the program of these funds, but also to seek grants to extend the use of these funds. Because I don't believe the problem will be going away by 2038.
Thank you. And the other, the, the other question was, after the funding runs out, is this, are these responsibilities for the employees something that could be rolled into the youth advocate position?
The youth advocate has their own contract with their own, their own job description, which does not contain any of the tasks that we are assigning to the substance use program coordinator. But over time, as Dartmouth picks up the funding of this position, it will be able to task this person with additional tasks that would benefit the town.
Perfect. Any further discussion on Article 17? Are we ready to vote?
No, I, there's one more.
Please. Right to your, to your right? Yep, there you go.
Hello? Hi, Kelly Normandin, Precinct 6. I'm just wondering, is there a plan in place to gauge the success of these initiatives in order to inform future spending?
Absolutely. Yeah, we wouldn't have done it if we didn't.
Could you share some details?
Sure. I've already worked with the police department because of the initial 80,000, we already started the program with them. And what we had put aside, they have already expended in the first five months of this year, which is what we put aside for 12 months. So when we meet, and we meet on a regular basis, the police department does share how many overdoses have occurred within our town. They also have numbers from the New Befford Opioid Task Force that tell us Dartmouth residents that may have an overdose in New Befford. We can also get that information, kind of Bristol County-wide. Beyond that, we don't have any information, but that's how they determine who they're going to visit and, and seek. That is, what we're gauging there is how many more people we're seeing. Unfortunately, on occasion, we do have success, and they are able to talk someone into going into treatment. But we cannot use treatment as the only measure of success. As far as the programs that we're purchasing to be used at Dartmouth High School, we will be looking at them, and they have a metrics that they use on any curriculum. And so the Wayfair program, they'll be looking at to see pre and post-testing of the student's understanding of healthy choices. And they'll be letting us know how we are going to expand that program. We'll also be looking at the numbers of students. Right now, the high school and middle school have vibrant offerings, but we want, without transportation. So we want to see the numbers of individuals participating, does it increase with the offering of bus transportation? It is a huge ticket item. And we're really hoping that the, the kids who we anticipate are, may seek something to do in their spare time, with less spare time, with more engagement with their peers and with adults in healthy habits, we will see overall drops in the use of other substances. Finally, while I have the mic one more time, our other concern is not just people in, with addiction, with substance use disorder. There is a belief that because marijuana is legal, that we can all smoke it anytime. If you're not buying marijuana at, prescribed at a cannabis regulation, through cannabis regulation at one of their, and you're just getting it from a buddy on the street, we're finding that marijuana is laced with all kinds of deadly things. Marijuana, cocaine, everything. So for folks that think, no big deal, I just party on the weekends, those are the people who are overdosing. And so that's the message we need to get out to the general public. This is not just about addiction and, and substance use disorder. This is also about saving people from potential recreational drug use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 17 passes at 10:12. Article 18, Appropriation for Use of Dartmouth Cable TV/DC TV Stabilization Fund for Capital Expenditures. This is a two-thirds vote. Gary?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, the article appropriates 45,000 for DCTV stabilization fund for the FY '26 to use for expenditures for DCTV headquarters.
Thank you. And Mrs. Silver Brooks, you're making that motion?
Yes, I move the motion.
And do I have a second? And Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 800.
Thank you. Select Board recommendation?
Unanimous.
Any discussion on Article 18? Are we ready to vote? Oh, I'm sorry, right here, please?
Hi, Courtney Steele, Precinct 7. Is the 45,000 for, in addition to the preservation for the 25,000 previously?
Yes. So what this is for is, and Pete maybe can speak a little bit more detail as for a facility where they want to put their vehicle in, currently they're renting space in New Befford that is, is quite a substantial amount of money for the fund. So they're looking to keep that on the, on the, onsite, and have the truck that they use stored in the vehicle, almost like a Shelter Logic-type facility. So they're no longer having to pay rent at a, another facility. Pete can maybe speak a little more.
Mr. Chase, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, Peter Chase, Director of Media. Yeah, so the community preservation fund is doing 25,000. The study was going to be 30,000, so we're putting 5,000 from that. And then also, like Gary was talking about, we're looking to build a portable-type garage behind our parking lot, and that's about 20, 25,000. And then there's a little bit of play in there, just in case we go over with all the expenses now.
Any further discussion on this warrant article? Are we ready to vote? I'm sorry. On the, on, on the aisle on that side, please?
Brian Leach, number nine. I was wondering, aren't there garages behind the police station that they could possibly use instead of building a temporary garage?
Mr. Carrero?
The height of the truck doesn't allow for that, and it's a box truck. Those, those are probably 10-foot openings. The truck would not fit in that. And the reason why they have that truck is because of all the equipment that they carry around from site to site.
Great, thank you. And in the back, please?
Joan Menard, Precinct 9. Is the amount net of the rental costs?
Is the amount net of rental cost? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Go ahead, Pete.
Peter Cherry, Director of Media. Yeah, right now, we're paying about $9,000 a year. So we figure in two and a half years, we would pay it off.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 18? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 18, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 18 passes at 10:15. Article 19, Appropriation for Use of Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund for School Fire Safety Capital Expenditures. This also requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Carrero?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article appropriates 450,000 for the Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund for FY '26 to use for fire safety capital expenditures to school buildings as recommended by the fire districts.
Thank you. And I have a motion, Mrs. Silver Brooks?
Yes, motion to move this.
And a second. Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance, Finance Committee recommends 500.
And Fin, Select Board recommendation, please?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 19? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 19, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 19 passes at 10:16. Article 20, Loan for Septic System Repair, Replacement, and/or Upgrade. Mr. Carrero?
This article appropriates 400,000 in finance, to finance the water pollution abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, or upgrade of septic systems administered by the water health.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
And a second? Second, thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And Select Board recommendation?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 20? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 20, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 20 passes at 10:17. Article 21, Establishment of a Camping Bylaw. Mr. Savistano? You want to speak to it, Mr. Carrero, or? Mr. Vitale is going to speak to this.
This article amended the town's general bylaws by adding a new section set forth in the article in order to address concerns with public safety, sanitation, and the impact of unauthorized camping on public property.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks, are you moving this?
Moving, yes.
And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance voted eight, zero, eight, zero. It was eight against, it was unanimously against voting on this.
So you voted not to recommend?
We voted not to recommend.
Okay. And the Select Board?
We voted unanimously to recommend it.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 21? Gentlemen down front, and then I will, I see you, hands going up, so.
Arthur Gerard, Precinct 2. I would like to get the input of the police chief on his recommendation on this article, since he's going to be in charge of enforcing it. Please.
So let me see if the chief is here, and he'd like to speak to this. I'm going to recognize Mr. Savistano. Did you have something to add to this? Mr. Savistano?
Yes. The enforcement officials include the police department, but also include the Director of Public Health, the Director of Inspection Services, which is the Building Commissioner, and their designees.
Thank you.
So it's a, it's a significant board of health issue in addition to a police issue.
Thank you.
I can, I can tell you that we've had numerous meetings with numerous town officials to discuss major health-related issues that arose from people camping for months on town property. And we were trying to find ways to give the town some authority to enforce the removal. It became a, perhaps, I don't know the exact amount, but the cleanup of that property is going to be over, I believe, $20,000, just to clean up the property from people camping there. So we drafted this bylaw as a means to give town officials some authority to, over their own properties.
Thank you. So Chief Levesque, do you have anything that you want to add to the discussion on this bylaw?
Yes, Brian Levesque, Chief of Police. We're called frequently to deal with this issue. People discover, you know, someone camping on town property. The town has- The town has put together a group, which we're a part of, that go out to these different sites and try to offer services to folks, to get them to move along, provide housing. Some people are reluctant to accept that. And we have very limited options in dealing with them at that point. Right now, really, the only option we have and that we've utilized is a trespass order. Normally, we need to identify the person. It's drafted by town council. We then go back out to the site and we serve the person with the order that mandates they leave the property. The problem with this is, as you can see, it takes multiple steps to complete. It's time-consuming. In addition to that, the people who are camping have no prior notice that it's not even allowed. Whereas with this bylaw, if we had a problem area in town, we could post it ahead of time, notifying people that this area is, there's no camping allowed here. So they have some notice. In addition to that, violation of a trespass order is an arrestable offense, it's a criminal offense, where this bylaw would allow us the discretion to issue a civil fine, a penalty, as opposed to having either arrest a person or take them before the courts. So it allows us a lot more leeway. And, you know, similar to the noise bylaw we currently have in town, the officers would have discretion, or any of the people authorized to enforce this would have discretion as to how they handled it, whether they issued the fine, or they gave the person a warning, or notified them simply that they needed to move along. So I think this gives us a lot more flexibility and options in dealing with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Gentlemen over here, please.
Albert Lay, Precinct seven. One concern I have is overall homelessness. And what I'd like to propose as an amendment is to allow someone that's a town occupant that loses their house for some reason, has to live in their car, the opportunity to find new housing. So what I'd like to propose is adding to this argument a period of time, thirty days, for this person to find new homes. And as the chief has mentioned, they kind of do that, but it's not in writing. So my amendment hopefully would allow that person who is, you know, town of Dartmouth resident, and I've chosen to use the annual census as a means to determine whether that person is a resident. Every year, the town clerk sends that out, so to me, a simple phone call to town hall by a responding police officer could determine that.
Okay. Do you, can you please provide me with that amendment in writing?
Yes.
Yes. So she's asking for relief. I haven't allowed her to speak yet. Tell me, you want to speak on the amendment, or? Sure. Let me, let me take his amendment first and let me, and as part of the discussion with the amendment, if you'd like to add that information, I'll allow it there. So the amendment I have before me is, the proposed amendment, it is proposed the following amendment be added to Article twenty-one, Establishment of Camping Bylaw, to Article eight of the camping bylaw. The section is three, one, five, dash, two, seven. So if you're looking at your packet, I'm trying to turn that to dot, point one.
It's adding the point one?
Okay, we're adding the point one. So it's, so under restrictions, so this would be added beneath, so on page fifteen, sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to read this and help to point you in the right direction. So on page fifteen, this would be added under that first section, which is three, one, five, dash, two, seven. And the addition says restriction exception. Any person that has been recorded in the Town of Dartmouth Annual Census is exempt from this article, eight camping, for a period of thirty consecutive days from the point in time that written notice is given by the designees of the chief of police. This written notice will be kept on file at the Town of Dartmouth Police Department for a period of one year from the date of issuance. So that is the amendment we have before us. It's been moved. Do I have a second on that amendment? I have a second on that amendment. I'm going to open it for discussion, and Mrs. Brooks would like to speak to some of the work that's been done by the committee.
So the, we have the Dartmouth Community Social Outreach Team, which of the members, Matt Dansaro, is the outreach coordinator for the Town of Dartmouth. So part of Matt's work is to work with anyone in the town, housed or unhoused, to secure housing, other housing, insurance, food, whatever supports that they need. He is a member of this task force. Amy DePietro of the Department of the Council on Aging, the police chief or his designee, fire chief of District Three, who then reports to Fire Districts One and Two. Also, the Board of Health is a member of this. The concern that members of the DESCOT have is that at, in January, there was a point in time count taken, and the point in time is determined by the federal government. And they look for a date in January, and across the nation, that's the date that a group would go out in any community and look for unhoused individuals. Two years ago when this was done, the group found seven. This year, the group found twenty-eight. Once identified, members of the group went out continually to offer housing to the individuals that were found. Some individuals were hesitant to go into housing because they had trauma related to a shelter or returning to their family. Others may have pets with them that would not be accepted into the shelter. Some were in relationships that would not be acceptable to go into a shelter. That meaning they weren't actually husband and wife and would not be allowed to get a spousal shelter. There were a number of reasons. Now, that being said, DESCOT does not go out and simply remove people and remove their property. They work with the individuals to secure shelter. As of today, and actually as of a month ago, currently, all twenty-eight individuals have found shelter, have returned to their family. And one of the issues that we had with the remaining individual is sort of that, you can't make me. And so we did use a no trespass order to get them to realize that this was a serious situation for them to move. And that individual, upon seeing that, said, all right, help me. Now, that being said, there are a number of people camping out on non-Dartmouth town-owned property. This camping bylaw addresses only the town-owned land. It also is something that we thought would be uniform. In the past, representatives from the Board of Health have gone out and spoken to unhoused individuals. Members of the school department staff has gone out to remove individuals. People, individuals from Parks and Rec have gone out on their property. But we didn't have a uniform guideline. This would provide us with a uniform guideline. It is a no trespass order in the sense, but it's, if folks want to walk the land, that's fine, it's just the camping. Fast forward, when an individual spends a considerable amount of time in their encampment, we have a three-bid proposal to clean up the most recent encampment. That encampment has human waste, pet waste, medical waste, drug paraphernalia, all which has to be cleaned up accordingly, hazmat the whole thing. The price that we currently have ranges between fifteen thousand and twenty-four thousand dollars to clean up one encampment site. This encampment site is in an aquifer district and is on the banks of water that feeds our well system. It must be cleaned up. It is not the desire of the members of DESCOT to simply move people along, it's to get them adequate housing and keep them safe. This is a concern for the police department, it's also a concern for the fire department. Very often, especially this winter, they would be called to random fires in the woods, and that's how they would identify that someone had set up an encampment. Certainly wildfires are a concern everywhere. And again, this is another opportunity for us to encourage people who are unhoused to take up our offerings of securing them shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savistano, would you like to speak?
Yes, while I understand the intent of this motion, I see several problems with it as drafted. For instance, it talks about anyone that has been recorded in the town annual census. It doesn't say when, they could have been recorded this year or twenty years ago. It talks about written notice given by the chief of police, doesn't say to whom, it doesn't say what the notice should say. It doesn't address the other enforcement authorities within the draft bylaw. Doesn't say what the notice would say. It also, as written, would mean, even if I had a home and I camped on town property and I wasn't homeless, I would be subject to this exception, which is not the intent of the bylaw. I understand it, the drafting came from good intent, but there's a number of legal issues that this would cause in enforcing the bylaw if you were to pass the bylaw. I would also note that any time there's an enforcement, there's authority within, with the enforcement authorities to use its own discretion. Like if a police officer pulls you over, sometimes they'll just give you a warning. They don't have to give you a ticket. So this doesn't require the enforcement authority to ticket somebody, they can say, hey, pack up and leave. It just gives it some teeth if the people don't pack up and leave.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment only? So on the amendment? If it's not on the amendment, okay. Right here, please.
Hi, Margaret Sweet, Precinct nine. What I have a problem with is the word consecutive. So does that mean in this amendment that they can stay there ten days, the police come, tell them to move out, they stay out two days, and they come back and the thirty days start again? Because they can stay there forever if that's the case? Thank you.
Thank you. Any, this is on the amendment, I'm taking comments, so on the end there, please? Not on the main motion, so on the amendment right now.
Hello, my name is Dave Costa, and I enjoy hearing the solution and finding twenty-eight people, working with them, getting them housing, getting and all that, and struggling with the last one. And we do have a law that solves the last one. Transport, you're trespassing. And that last one was addressed that way. I'm always concerned when the homeless or the mentally ill, or the people with psychiatric problems who we don't necessarily, it takes from February to now to get them housing. Instead of that, they're going to be where I used to work, and I used to have to do psych assessments. They're going to be in a prison. And we're going to be paying for them in Dartmouth anyways, in Farnes Corner Road, not getting services. And if they're psychiatric, I'm sending them to Bridgewater. But all those things should be happening long before we start making homelessness a crime. And I understand that the police are doing it, and it's frustrating. You guys can look into more social workers rather than the police going in there and getting those services, just like you said. In February, it was twenty-eight, now there's none. We can do it without creating a crime.
Thank you. Mr. Savistano, did you have?
Right now, the only way to enforce it is through a criminal trespass. This makes it a non-criminal citation. So as the chief said, this gives the town civil rights without making it a crime. So I think the intent was to soften, because otherwise you have to give them a notice not to trespass, and if they don't leave, you have to arrest them and charge them with a crime. The purpose is to avoid doing that.
Okay. So we're discussing the amendment? Amendment? Want to discuss the amendment?
Can you repeat the amendment?
I absolutely, sure, I can absolutely repeat the amendment. So the amendment says, a restriction exception. Any person that has been recorded in the Town of Dartmouth Annual Census is exempt from this Article eight camping for a period of thirty consecutive days from the point in time that written notice is given by the designee of the chief of police. This written notice will be kept on file at the Dartmouth, at the Town of Dartmouth Police Department for a period of one year from the date of issuance. Okay. So we'd like to vote on the amendment. Yeah? All right, are we ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The amendment fails at ten thirty-six. I have the current sheriff, Paul Haru, who actually would like to speak on this, and since we heard from Chief Leveque, he'd like to talk about its impact on the jails and some of the services they have. Would you be amenable to hearing him? He's not a town meeting member and he's not a resident. Yeah? Thank you. Sheriff Haru, would you like to come down and speak?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you, everyone, for giving me an opportunity to speak to this body. I'm here to talk about a concern that I have about this, and this isn't the first time I've raised this concern in different communities. From my point of view at the jail, this is a civil enforcement mechanism. So it's a one-hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred dollar fine if you are found guilty of, you know, violating this ordinance. So that's a civil issue. However, the only way to really enforce that is through the courts. And if you're taking somebody who has a one-hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred dollar fine, now you've got six hundred dollars worth of fines, what you're going to end up with is somebody who probably, if they're homeless, they probably can't pay that. And if they continue to violate this ordinance, what's going to happen is that, through the enforcement mechanism, the court, the court is going to say, you have to pay this. And if a person doesn't pay it, now you're, and the court has ordered you to, now you're in contempt of court, now you go to the jail. So a person who may not have had a criminal record previously, but was down on their luck with the homeless issue, now they've added a criminal issue to that. And so as if it wasn't more difficult enough to get somebody back on their feet, this could make it more difficult. Now, I appreciate the chief's comments and a lot of the other comments, that this is a useful tool, but I just, I thought it was important to mention that this is a slippery slope from just a civil offense to eventually a criminal offense. However, I don't want to stop there. I don't want to just come and talk about problems. I want to offer at least three solutions or three things. At the jail, we have experts, staff, who specialize in housing, healthcare, and a job, and three of them are here with me today. And I'm willing to use jail resources to assist the Town of Dartmouth, to help out where needed, to help people get back on their feet with housing, healthcare, and a job, because there's a lot of overlap between the people who would be homeless in Dartmouth and in other communities, as well as who we have at our jail. So whether you have, you know, when I say housing, homelessness, housing, healthcare, and a job, the healthcare includes mental health and substance abuse treatment. So that's one thing I extend is us to assist the Town of Dartmouth. If you have limited resources, we can complement those. Secondly, we have our litter crew. Now, I think the litter crew would be useful up to a certain point with cleaning up some of the encampment sites. So I'd also like to volunteer the litter crew to help Dartmouth clean up, I know, up to a certain point, because at a certain point, you would need to get some professionals in, you know, the hazmat suits. So that's a second point. A third point is, and you may or may not be aware of this, but the state legislature sometime last year, maybe about eight or nine months ago, passed a three-billion-dollar housing bond bill. And that housing bond bill can be used to build homeless shelters and public housing, low-income housing, affordable housing. And if you weren't aware of that, I know the state, your state reps and state senators are aware of this, but if you're not asking them to tap some of that money, to bring some of that money back to Dartmouth, you should. So reach out to the state reps, the state senators, and say, hey, that three-billion-dollar bond bill, we would like some of that here to help with some housing for people who are down on their luck and otherwise homeless. So anyway, I just wanted to mention those couple of things from my point of view of where I sit, and, you know, I'm not a resident of Dartmouth, I live in Attleboro, but I do appreciate you giving me the do appreciate you giving me this opportunity.
Mr. Savistano, did you want to follow up?
Yes. So first of all, it's a misnomer to refer, everybody keeps talking about the homeless. This bylaw is broadly drafted to address a number of issues in the town, kids camping on the beach, being told not to camp on the beach, a number of other issues. It's not targeting the homeless first and foremost. Second, respectfully, I have to disagree. I've been town council for 20 years. We've effectively used non-criminal dispositions, tickets for zoning violations, for building code violations, for board of health violations, for conservation commission violations. Nobody's ever gone to jail. We've ticketed a lot of people. In my 20 years, nobody's ever gone to jail for not paying a ticket. Because there is another provision in here, which provides for enforcement through injunctive relief as well, which would allow me on behalf of the town to go to Superior Court. If somebody, we've had issues before where somebody continually violates zoning. We ticket them, it gives us leverage because the fines start adding up, but we also go to Superior Court and seek an injunction, ask the court to order them to be removed. So again, there's a lot of broad policy issues that went into place in drafting this bylaw. It's used for many things, and it's not meant to target homeless. That's not the sole purpose of this bylaw. And again, if you've been to the meetings involving the town officials, they went out of their way to find people homes, find people places to live. Nobody wanted to use the no trespass, criminal trespass provision, which is the only thing available to us currently. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back on discussing the main motion, and I see that we still have some people that would like to talk about this, so, and I see you right there, I'm getting to you.
Lori Ann Miller, precinct nine. My main question is, you keep on talking about public property. You've found all these encampments on public property. The chief talked about public property, but this article also says private property. That's my concern. You all keep talking about public, but it says private.
Yes, it says, on any property, public or private, without the permission of the owner. So an owner could come to the town and say, I have somebody camping on my property, I've asked them to leave, they're not leaving. The town could enforce this.
Thank you. And on the aisle here, I, yes?
Howard Bakersmith, precinct eight. I'm concerned about this approach for two things. One is, this really is about the homeless folks, and I don't think we should kid ourselves. If it was concerned about kids camping, we would have had this 50 years ago. This is about the homeless folks. And so I'm struck with the contradiction that I feel here with everything we've heard about this, what the town seems to have learned about the treatment, how to approach opioid addiction, and the understanding of poverty and addiction, and what that means to individuals and families, as well as the success that the town has currently had with the tools available to it, with the team, and really understanding that a series of fines isn't going to change this situation at all. It would suggest that there is some rational calculation that a person who is fighting addiction or has other issues that have caused them to be homeless, they're not going to scan the local bylaws and then look at their bank account and then calculate the fines. It's just a wrong approach, and it's an approach that we know is wrong already, because the town has learned that through what it understands about addiction, and the town has learned how to be successful with its outreach team. This is unnecessary, and it won't change anything. I would encourage the town to continue to use its practices effectively, including ultimately no trespass, if that's what's necessary, and not have put the officer in the front line to make those kinds of decisions and assessments. We know how to do this well, and having a series of financial fines that just put people into further financial stress and poverty, and a calculation that they are not going to make on their own, it just seems unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here, please. Do you want to move the question? So I have a motion to move this question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Oh, I think that motion carries. Okay. So on the main motion before us, the establishment of a camping bylaw which requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article 21, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 21 fails at 10:46. Article 22, Article 22. Personnel bylaw amendment, position title change, Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The article amends the title of the following position according to provisions of Mass General Law. The current title is Personnel Administrator. The new title is Human Resources Director.
Thank you. Mrs. Silver Brooks, you're moving this one?
Yes, move the motion.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And Select Board Recommendation.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 22? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 22, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 22 passes at 10:47. Article 23, Acceptance of Adjusted Exemption Amount Clause 22i. Our veterans agent, Mr. Boulay? I thought I saw him. Come on down.
It's a long way down. All right. These bylaws would double the, rather, the abatements for veterans that are currently service-connected with the VA.
You're going to move this? Yes? So this is, we're on-
This is Article-
Twenty, 23.
Three.
Yeah, I'm on Article 23. I thought maybe I had missed one.
No, Article 23.
Yeah. So Article 23, Mrs. Brooks, you're moving it?
Yeah.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 500.
Okay. And Select Board Recommendation.
Unanimous.
And any further discussion on Article 23? Yes. Let me get you a microphone.
I think you have these questions reversed. You said this doubles the exemption. I think that's the next question.
Right, so, yeah, go ahead. I'll let you finish.
You know where I'm going with this, right? I don't have to continue?
So, so the article before us is to see if the town will vote to accept the general laws, 50, chapter 59, section 5, clause 22i, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under the, under the general law, and the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau Statistics Consumer Price Index for the previous year as determined by the Commission of Revenue to be effective. So this is to increase the, the, the amount of the exemption, is that what this is? Mr. Boulay? Yeah?
Oh.
On Article 23?
Correct.
I wonder if we've just reversed them in our discussion of them?
Okay.
The next, because the next article will sense, will increase the percentage to 100% of the exempted amount?
Correct, yeah. So I'm, I was prepared to speak on Article 24, 23, Article 23 was more of a finance committee decision.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Carrero.
I can give you an explanation on 23. So as the moderator spent, the article authorized acceptance of recently passed Massachusetts General Laws Hero Act that adds new local exemptions to increase certain veterans exemption amounts. Clause 22i would increase the amount of the exemption granted to veterans in their, at their, on their homes annually by cost of living adjustments in the COLA, determined by the Department of Revenue, DOR, and as the moderator just mentioned, based on the Consumer Price Index.
So it's a, it's a tax exemption on their property tax for veterans, and what it does is it increases the amount that's exempt, and it's tied to CPI.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on this warrant article? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 23 passes at 10:51. Article 24 is the acceptance of optional additional veteran exemption clause under 22J. Sir?
I said, that would double the amount for veterans with service-connected disabilities, as well as widows, veterans who had service-connected disabilities.
Okay. And that's also on property tax?
Correct.
Yes.
Abatements, yes.
Thank you. Property tax abatements, thank you. Any discussion, I'm sorry, I need it moved by, thank you. And do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 800.
And Select Board Recommendation.
Unanimously support.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote on this, or do we need to discuss it? Down here, please. I have a question.
Curtis Noon's, precinct six, also Board of Assessors. So this is a great thing, this hasn't been done since the early 1980s, that the veterans, every category will be doubled. If they get $400 now, they'll get $800 and so on. If you're 10% disabled or more, you qualify. If you're married to somebody that passed away and they had a situation, please come into the office and check this out. If your children died and you're a Gold Star parent because they died in the military, you qualify. There are so many categories, you really need to check this out. We had somebody this year in their mid-80s, applied for the first time. They're not a new veteran. You know, people just don't know enough about this. You could be, have the loose, you know, loss of the use of a foot, a hand, an eye, or both. So there's a lot of different categories that this covers. We encourage you to call the Board of Assessors and find out. Also, the elderly exemptions, if you're 70 years old, you've owned property for a certain amount of time, ask about those. If those don't work, we have a hardship. I think there's only two in town. If you follow some of these classifications in income and age and qualifications, that might be a hardship. Come in, talk to us, please.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is for veterans that were, the, we're not expanding every category, what we're expanding is for veterans. I know we got a little bit off the, off the topic, but I want to make it clear what you're voting on. So this is for veterans only. Is there any further discussion on this? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 24, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 24 passes at 10:53. Article 25, thank you. Article 25, leasing of 404 Elm Street property, Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article authorizes a select board to negotiate a lease or other contractual agreement of not more than 30 years for the use of the town-owned property known as Old Southworth Library for the purposes of arts, culture, and of civic engagement.
Thank you. And Mrs. Silver Brooks, you're moving that, are you? Thank you. And a second. Second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 600.
Thank you. And Select Board Recommendation, please.
Unanimously support.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 25? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 25, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 25 passes at 10:54. Article 26, license to carry exclusion of municipal administrative buildings on town property. I will recognize, I guess, Mr. O'Neill first? You need a microphone, please. So this is the minority opinion, this is, Mr. O'Neill is in the minority, so this is the minority opinion he is providing.
I'd like to move Article 26.
Unfortunately, you can't, because I don't think you're a town meeting member, right? Are you a town meeting member?
No.
No.
Okay, so I need you to, you-
Someone else.
Sure, I was asking, who's summarizing this article for us?
Who's what?
Summarizing the article. Is Mr. O'Neill summarizing the article?
I'll speak to it.
Yeah, so if you want to summarize the article for us, you may do that.
Okay.
That's what I was looking for, for right now.
Okay. Summarization, license to carry exclusion municipal administrative buildings on town property, to see if the town will vote to exclude its municipal administrative buildings from being a prohibited area under MGL, chapter 269, section 10, where thereby allowing possession of a firearm, loaded or unloaded, as defined in section 121, chapter 140, and said buildings.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion, and it would have to be somebody who's a town meeting member, to move this, and they'd have to be voting in favor of it, because that's how Robert rules work. So anyone want to move this? Move it. And a second, thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended 54, three against.
Thank you. Five in favor, three against. I'm like, 54.
Five in favor.
Select Board Recommendation, please.
Two in favor, three against.
Thank you. So now I'm opening the floor for discussion on Article 26. Yes?
Steven Taylor.
Wait, could you please wait for a mic so we can all hear you?
Steven Taylor, precinct nine. This is a one-sentence proposal. It says from the Select Board. It's not explained what the reasoning and thinking was, and so I would like to hear somebody from the Select Board, presumably who was in favor, to explain whether the concern is for town employees, volunteers, staff, and committee members to protect themselves by carrying guns in town buildings.
Sure.
Or whether the concern is for citizens coming in and out of town buildings for whatever reason, to be prepared to do their Wyatt Earp thing if a crazy comes in. I'd like to hear the reasoning for the Select Board before we take a vote.
So could someone, sure, Mr. O'Neill?
Chris O'Neill, precinct nine, Select Board Member. Madam Moderator, thank you for giving me a couple of minutes on this one. Town Finance Committee members for their vote of approval, my fellow Select Board members for allowing the article to be heard, and our Chief of Police, Brian Leveque, the person who monitors the close to 5,000 citizens that are trained and licensed to conceal and carry for endorsing this article. We disagree on a lot of things at these meetings, so I wanted to just spend a couple of seconds talking about some of the things that we probably agree on. First, we can agree that the legislation passed back in October did some great things. Ghost guns, serial number requirements, all something we can probably agree were well-done. We can also agree that the legislation that was passed by people in a building in Boston, protected by metal detectors and state police while they were voting. The legislation was passed, including the option for you, town meeting, to decide if administrative buildings could be carved out of the law, so they could decide, so you could decide on that part only. So they, they sensed, the legislature sensed the need to provide that allowance, that window. The schools and the polling places are not up for discussion in this exemption. We can agree that we all sit here in town meeting under a blanket of security provided by our Chief of Police and the police detail that we're so thankful for. We can also agree that the children in our schools and the teachers that teach them deserve the protection that is currently provided by those same trained and licensed officers. We can also agree that the people that we ask to serve on some of the most contentious meetings in our town have had their blanket of security taken away from them with this recent change in the law. For hundreds of years, the people of Dartmouth have volunteered for boards, have been elected by its citizens, knowing that they have the ability to protect themselves without a paid detail at town hall or without metal detectors in town hall. I think that we can agree, for those people that we've asked to serve, they just want to do the best job they can and go home, to their families, to their kids and their grandkids. Now imagine for a second, just a second, that someone, the governor, someone with authority from Boston, just called and told the police at this meeting and the chief to go home. from Boston, just called and told the police at this meeting and the chief to go home and leave this building. And also, leave our schools and our kids unprotected by having our resource officers leave their posts. Just think about that. I think, how would it sit with you? I, I think we can all agree again, that it wouldn't sit very easy for any of us. That's how it feels to be unprotected, whether you agree, whether you carry, whether you don't. I respectfully ask that you vote to allow the exemption for administrative buildings only, to allow the responsible citizens of our town and the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board members, the Select Board members, and all the volunteers that meet in our town hall to simply continue to protect themselves if they choose, only if they choose and take the responsibility. They, allow them to do that without any fanfare or attention as they have for many, many, many years. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Taylor?
So Mr. O'Neill just explained his reasoning. I'd like to ask if, what is the view of why this was proposed with this language, which would include anybody to go into an administrative building, whether or not they were serving as a volunteer? I'd like to hear that part of the discussion. Does it really make sense to have all those people free to do that?
So, Mr. O'Neill, like, I'm not exactly sure what the question is, but Mr. Taylor is, is highlighting that you've highlighted the volunteers. What about the general public? They seem freely, like, freely able to now, would freely be able to go in with a...
Well, I'd submit that the general public can either legally, or prior to October, could either legally or illegally carry into the building. I, as, if I may, give you an example. With this change in the law, done very quietly in Boston, for such an important issue, I have an attorney that I know very well. He's done business with the town for probably 40 years. And he's carried quietly and without attention for probably all those 40 years, if I were to guess. I never ask, and I never tell. However, I brought this question up to him two weeks ago, and he said, "What are you talking about?" I explained the law and the change in the law and the fact that he can no longer go into, in his daily work, go to the building department, pay a fee, go see somebody in the administration, do anything when it comes to the administration of the town, which he's done for those 40 years. And, and that, that causes a problem. He's a member of the public, yes, but he is licensed, he's trained, he's monitored by the police department, and is, is basically all of the laws surrounding the license to carry and the responsibility that people take. Very, very, you know, serious responsibility. Those people, yes, the public, if they have licensed and they're trained and they have the authority through, through your chief, then they would be able to transact business as they have for hundreds of years. It's only recently, since October, that that's changed here.
Any further discussion on this?
Good night.
The gentleman down here, please.
Brian Thomas, Precinct 4. I guess a couple of questions. One would be, in the 360 years that it's been allowed, has there been any problem in any of our municipal buildings dealing with firearms?
Is anyone aware of a problem in our municipal buildings? I don't know who would, the police chief is aware, or the Select Board aware of any problems in our municipal buildings? I don't believe so. I'm not getting a great answer, but I don't believe so.
That's not...
Yeah.
Okay.
There has been one.
There has been one incident? One incident.
How long ago, please? Roughly?
How long ago?
It was at the DPW. I would say 10 years ago.
Fair enough. Second question would be, if the bad thing happens, how do people protect themselves if they don't have their weapon?
Who would you, I'm not sure, yeah. It seems a little rhetorical. I'm not sure who to answer it.
I can't answer, but I do have the majority report.
Sure.
From the, on behalf of the majority of the Select Board that...
Sure.
...voted against this. The majority of the committee recommends unfavorable action on Article 26. While the intent of the article is to enhance safety by restricting the carrying of firearms in municipal administrative buildings located on town property, the majority finds the article overly broad and impractical in its current form. In particular, the exclusion fails to account for the unique circumstances in Dartmouth, such as municipal buildings situated on or adjacent to school property that do not serve educational functions or host student activity. The lack of distinction between buildings that pose actual safety concerns and those that do not may result in unintended consequences, including confusion among license holders and enforcement challenges for town officials. Furthermore, the article risks conflicting with existing state laws governing firearms on or near school grounds, potentially exposing the town to legal ambiguity...
Ambiguity.
Thank you. Ambiguity or liability. The majority believes that the more narrowly tailored policy, such as one that exempts specific buildings or defines proximity to school use more clearly, would benefit balanced public safety with the rights of licensed individuals and administrative practicality. I will tell you that a survey was taken of town employees to determine their comfort level with this. 68% of the employees voted against this. 27 said yes, and five were undecided. Of the narrative that was provided, there were members who voted yes, as they are also licensed holders, and this would allow them to bring their, their gun to work. There are those that are against, that are concerned that the positions that they are in currently do not have training, such as we use in the school department, lockdown training, ALICE training. That's not a part of it. They also feel that they would prefer, if this were to pass, that there would be someone on-site armed in case there were an issue. Now, in stating that there are SRO officers, the SRO officers are not assigned to every school every day. And there are no resource officers assigned to municipal buildings.
Right here, please. I see a lot of hands going up, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to y'all.
Margot Moore, Precinct 8. I'm speaking not just for myself, but for the constituents who have emailed me, called me, and stopped me on the street to, to ask me to vote no on this article. I've assured them that I will be voting no. I agree with, one, one constituent said we would just be promoting a gun culture in Dartmouth, and, and it just seems very problematical. And I respectfully disagree with Mr. O'Neill that people are trained. Just because you can get a license to carry a gun does not mean that you are trained on how to react in a dangerous situation, and you could probably end up making it far worse. I'm just appalled that I might live in a town that would be boning, boning for this. But as I said, I've had a number of people, and I am speaking for them in asking you to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see someone right in your row that also wanted to speak? Nope. Okay. Yes? You? Yes?
Gretchen Baker Smith, Precinct 8. I, I'll say first that I was previously an elder social worker and had to work with, it was in a different town, working with some officials who were dealing with a elderly person who had to be evicted. I have had a gun-allowed owner, angry, holding a long-handled rifle at me at the moment because he was furious at what was happening. So that's where I come from on my comments here. I, I want to say that Massachusetts has one of the lowest rates of gun violence in the state. It also has one of the highest standards for strict, safe laws in the country. Those go together. The middle school is literally 20 yards from the town hall. This town has not been immune to having violence in the schools with deaths. And I have been really struck in the last 10 years by the number of people with valid permits who are being in the news, who are the ones who are actually angry and going to places and shooting and killing people. I don't buy it that they are the responsible ones. And as a longtime youth worker, I just need to also say that we, as adults, need to be modeling the other ways of solving problems and being safe and being in relationship, citizens to citizens than our carrying guns and violence. We have to decrease the, the gun culture in this country, and we have the opportunity to do that here. There are really good reasons why this law was passed in the fall, and I urge you to please vote it down.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, we have a majority opinion, we have a minority opinion. I'd like to give everybody an opportunity on the FinCom to make their, their statements. The majority opinion is very simple. We support this article following our consultation with the Department of Police Chief, Brian Lebec, who wrote a detailed letter with his professional assessment to the Finance Committee. On a practical note, the, whether, if an unstable person comes into one of our municipal buildings, whether, whatever you vote for is not going to make a difference. What is going to make a difference is if there's a gun holder, a responsible gun holder in that building, it's going to take at least five minutes for the police to get there. And if that person can hold off a person from killing some people, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Again, on a practical standpoint, most of the people that enter the town hall with guns are, are probably contractors. They, they're very responsible people. They're in here to get licenses or do paperwork. So on a, on a practical basis, I, I support it. I would like, I'm gonna offer the, there's two people who want to offer their minority opinion, but I would like to hear from Chief Lebec on this matter.
Well, we can hear from him, but I, I get to pick who goes next, so...
Okay. All right.
So could we do the minority opinion next, please?
All right. Go ahead. Terry.
Teri Ham, Precinct 4. And I, I do want to point out, as Bob said, that when we have a split vote, we make a point of explaining both points of view, and, and I think we did a good job in our letter to town meeting. But when we asked the question, why is this needed in the town of Dartmouth? Why do the residents need this? We, we received no answer. Nobody had been arrested in a building for bringing in a firearm unauthorized. The only answer that we were given is that another town was doing it. And to us, it, in, in terms of what everybody else has talked about today, the need for safety, the need for people to feel safe, it didn't seem like a, a big accommodation to ask people to check their firearms before they came in the building.
Thank you. Mr. Sousa, you'd like to speak on this?
So I'm also opposed to the motion on the, the floor. It's my belief that gun control and, in the United States, gun control laws and gun rights, people have a very definitive position. I'm not going to sit here and argue my position with you folks. I, I could talk to them, I'm blue in the face, and I don't think I'm going to convince anybody on the other side of this issue. And that works from, nobody's going to convince me from the other side to change my position. And it's my belief that probably nine of, 90% of the folks in here can agree with that, that we all know where we stand on this issue. So I move the question.
So he's moving the question. Let's vote on the motion to move the question. All in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Okay. We're gonna move the question. We're ready to vote on Article 26. All in favor of Article 26, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 26 fails at 11:16. Article 27, citizen petition, all alcohol beverage license. Mr. Bullard?
To refresh your memory, you all supported Farm and Coast last year. Thank you. We've received, Farm and Coast has received a lot of support from a town meeting, from town hall, from the Select Board, from different departments, from State Rep, Chris Markey, from Mark Montigny. Farm and Coast is trying to expand, and we want a, an ability to sell spirits after the expansion is ready. The process is problematic. Some, I think Will Rogers said, "If you don't want to see sausage made, you don't want to know how legislation passes." And that's kind of what this is. We have to get town meetings to support the warrant. Then it goes up to the State House, and the House has to support it, and then the Senate has to support it, and then the governor has to sign it, and then we have to jump through some hoops with the ABCC. So this didn't quite work out last year. The warrant is word for word what came out from the House Committee. So they've approved it, but it took a while to get there. It was kind of a early to mid-December, and so it never really got to the Senate and it never got to the governor. So I'm here to answer any questions, but I want to thank everybody for their support.
Okay. So I need a town meeting member to move this. Thank you. And a second. Second. Any discussion on Article 20, Select, Finance Committee recommendation, sorry?
Finance recommended 600.
And the Select Board?
Unanimously supported it.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 27? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 27? Thank you. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 27 passes at 11:18. So we're gonna go back to Article 10. I'm wondering if we need, I need a five-minute break. Could we do, how, how do y'all feel about a five-minute break before we launch into Article 10? Because I think we're gonna have a robust discussion and, okay. So why don't we break for five minutes, and we're gonna come back in session at 11:25, okay? Thank you. So, I love that you're all having this moment of fellowship, but could we all start to take our place so we can begin again? I know I went a little long, I was trying to offer people an opportunity to use the comfort station, and if there was a line to be able to still use it and not miss out on this. Thank you all. So, town meeting is back in session at 11:32. As we talked about at the beginning of the day, the Long Range Planning Committee is going to do a short presentation, so the people on stage with me, we're gonna clear the stage and go sit back and watch this. It's going to be no more than 10 minutes, because you know how rabid I am about the 10-minute rule. So, it'll be 10 minutes or less. As I said, it's really to provide kind of a frame and a lens for what's being planned as you consider the budget. And after that, we will take up the budget, okay? We'll take up Article 10. So, we're gonna clear the stage, and Mr. Tattlebaum, I'm gonna turn it over to you to begin your presentation.
Hello. Some of you may know that, know me, who I am, I'm Dave Tattlebaum. I'm a member of the Select Board, but I'm speaking to you today as the Chair of the Long Range Planning, Long Range Capital Planning Committee. I want to make a point to thank the moderator, who's graciously granted us the 10 minutes. I've never talked this fast and talked so short in my life, so I'll do the best I can. It's a crash course into what this committee has been working on and what long-range planning is. We do not have time for questions now, but members of the Long Range Capital Planning Committee will be present after the meeting, and we will have opportunities for you to submit comments to the committee and then learn more about additional workshops ahead. Whoops, I think I went too far, okay. Long Range Planning offers a three-part approach for planning for Dartmouth's future. It looks, it looks to the future, that helps the town plan and budget and save for large projects. The types of projects that fall under long-range capital are one-time, large projects that the town needs to borrow for. And I'd just like to mention, we can plan and prepare for these projects before they are more costly or require crisis management. Many projects can be classified as long-range capital, but they must all be considered, excuse me, based on need, value, and cost benefit. And that brings us to who is on our Long Range Planning Committee. On the left, it's a, top left is a picture only a mother could love, that's me. Bruce Books. We have a really diverse group that's really well-qualified, put a lot of time in. Bruce Books is the Capital Planning Committee, he's been doing it a long time, well-versed in how we spend money on capital. Rob Almy is the Chair of the Board of Public Works, and Teri Ham is on the Finance Committee. These are the four volunteers. Down the bottom, we have an astute group of staff, Jim Colley, the Assistant Superintendent of the Schools, Maggie McCormish, the Communications Director, Christopher Tally, Assistant Town Administrator, and Gary Carrera. And I want to, we put a lot of time into this, and I want to commend the group. Everybody contributes, and it's a great point of view for all. So, here we have identified which projects will need to be done soonest and which we expect down the road. If you view this slide, let me be very, very clear. The committee put much time and analysis into the list, but we recognize that you all may have different perspectives. We want to make it, we want to hear from you. At the end of the presentation, you'll be able to rank these projects through an online survey. We've identified three public works projects that will need to be completed in the foreseeable future. Drinking water treatment facility, big. As regulations change and the town creates more housing, a significant strain is put on Dartmouth's water supply and its water supply treatment. The facilities which must be upgraded to accommodate that growth. Second, wastewater collection and treatment infrastructure. The existing wastewater treatment facility has reached its permitted capacity, and many elements of the 37-year-old facility need to be replaced. Payden Aaron Bridge. Dartmouth's working with the state on design, plans for a new bridge, which the state is funding. The state is funding that design. The construction timeline and the funding are still uncertain. We'd love to be able to wait for the state to fund this design and the construction, but that may be a risk due to the bridge's current condition. There are four school projects that we will need to consider over the next 20 or so years. Most urgent is the high school roof and windows. The town got its money worth, money's worth for these current roof and windows. The current, excuse me, one moment. The lowest bid 20 years ago was an old technology. The roof design and technology advanced significantly since then. This must be done. The middle school. The middle school, constructed in 1955, needs to be replaced. A plan to build a new Dartmouth High School on that site and turn the current high school into a middle school is being considered. DeMello and Potter School. DeMello and Potter School, both built in the 1950s, a slated for replacement. Planning is expected in 2030 and 2035, prioritized by condition of each building. The Quinn School. Quinn School is expected to need important repairs by 2040 to maintain a safe and effective The town has, also has projects that service the community outside of the schools and the wastewater. Many of these projects have been in the works, and residents have expressed interest in pursuing these projects. The Council on Aging of the Maria Connaught Center. Upgrades to the Dartmouth Council on Aging are already underway. Phase 1, which includes a new kitchen and enhanced gathering spaces, is in progress. Phase 2 will focus on a general renovation. Recreation Center. The town conducted a feasibility study in 2019, identifying the need and desire for a recreation center in Dartmouth. Memorial Stadium. Repairs and upgrades are necessary to ensure continued community use and safety for those using the stadium. As mentioned earlier, several projects are already underway. The COA projects have been a work in progress for years, and the state has been, excuse me, has been designing and funding the Payden Aaron Bridge. We also anticipate that work on the high school roof and windows will need to be written, need to be within the next year or so. We plan to start the wastewater projects in 2019. We plan to start the wastewater projects in 2027 under the guidance of DPW Director Tim Barber. Then the schools, one by one, will get the work we expect they will need in the next five to 20 years. The Rec Center, Memorial Stadium, and Payden Aaron Bridge construction dates are unknown because there are factors which require further planning and possible state funding. Payment options. Okay. Now you're probably thinking, how on earth are we going to pay for this stuff? To give a brief explanation, there are a couple of options. For the schools and community service projects, the town will likely need a debt exclusion. This is basically a loan, like a mortgage, that the town gets in order to pay for some of these large projects. This loan is paid for by an increase in residents' real estate tax bills, but once it's paid off, there is no more financial burden and the increase goes away. These large projects are typically on a payment schedule of 20 to 30 years. Town meeting and general election voters will need to approve this, so there's not without checks and balances. However, the town will be doing everything possible to get grants and state and federal funding to reduce the tax burden on residents for all Long Range Planning projects. When it comes to school projects, the town will not agree to complete them without MSBA funding to help supplement the cost of these projects. For the wastewater projects, they must be paid with enterprise funding, which means the costs will be covered with an increase in user fees. Like you saw before, identified projects are designed, prioritized, and assigned estimated costs. The town will establish an expected project timeline for each project. Thanks for listening. I hope you find it helpful and insightful. We recognize that this is a fresh, new look at Long Range Planning. We realize these big projects have big costs and are intimidating, but with a thoughtful planning, our town can make these projects affordable and achievable. We did ask the schools, like to make this point. We asked them to project way ahead of advance, much sooner than they expected. They did the best they could, but they just gave us a reasonable template. And we then can take that template and move on it and get feedback from people like you. As promised at the beginning, let us know your thoughts by scanning that QR code. You should be able to do it from your seat. It'll take a few minutes. You could rank the projects and send them back to us. I also have some handouts which we'll leave out front here with that schedule. If you want to know about the projects and participate in the process, mark your calendars for the three upcoming workshops we're holding in September. This is something that, this is pretty fresh and new, is an approach. We have three dates in September. Community service projects, all on Tuesdays. We try to pick dates and times that would be as universal as possible. The Council of Aging, it held at the Council of Aging on September 9. The public school projects at the Dartmouth Middle School TV will be live-streamed as well on the 17th. And it's going to be at the middle school, excuse me. And the public works projects at the North Branch Library on the 25th. If you'd like to have a sheet, I have, once again, at the end of the meeting, it'll show this page with the dates on it. I cannot impress upon you more that this is a plan and the way to plan and look ahead is to get something going and then work it and work it hard. We want to get your participation. This is, the trucks aren't going to start rolling tomorrow morning and construction doesn't begin all this stuff together. It's going to be with a, with a, with a, with a plan, the best we can do to get consensus from all, from town meeting members and of course from residents. These big projects don't go without votes from the general population as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tattelbaum, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to give a couple of minutes here for people to get back on stage. And in the meantime, what I'd like you to do is take out your packet, please. You have a separate sheet from the warrant that, or a separate packet from the warrant that is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. It says Town of Dartmouth. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go down the budget and I'm going to read totals for each category. And if you would like to discuss those categories, please call a hold. I know I have an amendment after this, so I'm also going to take that probably right after this. I have a couple of amendments that people have already provided to me. So, but you're welcome to call a hold and I'll make sure we clear the holds before we vote today. That's my goal. Okay. So let me get started. Under General Government. So just as an aside. Okay. Just as an aside, okay, so I'm looking at the Select Board budget and the reason that I'm using the Select Board budget is because our charter requires it. I know there's been some speculation about why I'm not using the FinCom budget. Our charter requires that I use the Select Board budget, so that's where I'm going. So, General Government, Town Meeting, $3,700. Moderator, zero. Select Board, Town Administrator. Finance Committee, $510,000. Town Accountant, $185,849. Next page, so I'm on page two. Assessors, $295,281. Director of Budget and Finance, Treasurer, $597,561. Town Collector, $436,415. Legal, $602,410. Human Resources Department, $200,730. I'm on page five, for those planning along at home. Management Information Systems, $790,566. Town Clerk, $310,740. Election and Registration, $147,500. Is there a hold on that? Okay. Election Registration. Conservation Commission, $163,766. Planning Board, $197,709. Board of Appeals. Hold on Planning Board? I'm sorry, who's calling the hold?
The number on the one on page five and Gary on page six, the number was different. I apologize.
That's okay. Do you want to hold though? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. So I'm onto Board, so I do not have a hold on Planning Board and I'm moving on to Board of Appeals. Okay. Board of Appeals, $75,310. Community Development Department, zero. Facility and Vehicle Maintenance, Town Hall and Other Buildings, $693,109. Vacant Building Maintenance, zero. Solar Net Metering Credits, $135,000. Communications, $76,000 for a total General Government of 6,000 million, $6,155,968. Public Safety. Police Department, $9,873,436. Ambulance Contract, zero. Building Department, $648,635. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $13,515. Emergency Management Agency, $55,400. Animal Control, $197,171. Natural Resources, $26,161 for a total Public Safety Budget of $10,814,318. Schools. Dartmouth Public Schools, $55,478,512. Greatin New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School, $6,300,000. Bristol County Agricultural High School, $210,000, I'm sorry, if only. Public Works. So for a total school budget of $61,988,512. Public Works. Department of Public Works salaries, $3,412,586. Department of Public Works expenses, $1,009,446. Streetlight expense, did somebody call a hold?
DPW expense.
DPW expense, hold. Thank you. Streetlights, $65,000. Traffic lights, $8,000. Regional Roughness Management Assessment, zero for a total budget, Public Works Budget of $4,495,032. Community Services. Board of Health, $457,736. Council on Aging, $431,379. Youth Commission, $92,569. Let me say that again. Recreation Department, zero. Park Commission, $531,272. Historical Commission, $250 for a total Community Services of $3,552,332. Did somebody put a hold, call hold, on the entire budget?
Yeah.
Hold. No, cleared. Okay. I love that we're clearing right now. Debt Service. Maturing Debt, total $1,382,000. Interest on Debt, $719,164 for a total Debt Service of $21,164. Employee Benefits. Pension and Retirement, $6,867,275. Work as Compensation, $355,000. Unemployment Compensation, $78,500. Life and Health Insurance, $9,498,287. Medicare Payroll Tax, $850,000. Police Medical Disability, $225,000. Other Employee Benefits, $196,587 for a total summary of employee benefits of $18,749. Property and Liability Insurance, $1,320,57 for a grand total of our budget of $108,503,2. Okay? So I'm going to start with, I have an amendment from Mr. Silva and I believe we have a copy of that slide that is going to be put up. I know you received a handout on your way in that you may have had an opportunity to look at. It's, it's, I've got a couple of tables and a QR code. So could we get a microphone to Mr. Silva so we can hear his amendment, please?
You need a motion.
Oh, you're right. I do need a motion. So do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
And I, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation on Article 10?
Finance Committee Recommended Article 10, 600.
And the Select Board?
Unanimous.
Thank you. And now we're open for discussion. So if I could get a microphone to Mr. Silva. Mr. Silva?
Good morning. Nathan Silva, Precinct 6. Madam Moderator, I've shared this passage with this body before, but I think it bears repeating again. And again, just to set the context, when this passage was written, the Greatest Generation had returned home from World War II less than a decade prior. They sacrificed mightily overseas and then they came home and sacrificed again financially, not for themselves, but for the future generations of this town's children. That's me and that's anyone in this room who is educated in town. The year 1953 was a year of decision for the Dartmouth Public Schools. The townspeople voted to build two new elementary schools and a new high school. No one group can claim the credit for the new schools in Dartmouth. It was the citizens themselves, one by one, who went out and voted and to them, the acclaim and congratulations. They know the kind of schools they want for their children. So I ask, Madam Moderator, what kind of schools do we want for our children? Are we satisfied with a school system that is funded just barely above the statutory minimum set by the state of Massachusetts in order to protect kids in even the stingiest of communities? Or do we want a school system that is funded according to our children's needs and our means? Because for the past two years and going on a third, we have forced the schools to spend in deficit, spending millions of dollars from a savings account that was built up over the course of time when the COVID grants were coming in. Now I'm glad we finally have a plan in place as to how we're going to deal with that situation, but it's a violation of our own financial policies nonetheless. But what's worse than breaking our own financial policies is that in order to make our budgets work, in order to make this town meeting's budgets work, we have forced the schools to cut over nine and a half positions last year with two more on the chopping block this year. That's a net of 11 and a half staffing positions that the schools have been downsized by. But beyond that, in order to account for the increasing needs that we have heard about year after year, we have forced the schools to reallocate what resources they have left remaining. Between last year's budget and the budget that we have before us right now, we will have lost 16 classroom teachers' positions and with those resources being shifted elsewhere in the school department. Now, the direct and tangible result of those cuts are that my daughter's class size increased by 33% between last year and this year, between the second grade and the third grade. That's an impact on her education. It's an impact on her educational environment and an impact on her teacher's ability to spend focused time with her in the areas in which she needs support the most. Now, I'd like to remind everyone that during last year's budget, when the schools had to lose nine and a half positions, not a single other department in town had to lose any positions on account of the budget. So what we are doing in the Town of Dartmouth is we are placing the entire burden of the town's financial pressures squarely on the shoulders of our children. And I think that's wrong. But you know what? We have a history of doing exactly that. Because when you look at the incremental cuts the school department has sustained over decades, they have compounded into the school department we have today, which is not necessarily reminiscent of the school department I grew up in. As I shared last year, when I was in elementary school, music was mandatory and I played the cello in the second grade. Now, don't get me wrong, my daughter enjoyed plucking away at the ukulele last year and she's looking forward to learning the recorder next year, but if we're being honest with each other, that is not the same experience as playing collectively in the band or in the orchestra. You fast forward to middle school and I remember fondly my time in the woodshop with Mr. Pelletier. Metalworking, where I made a candle holder that sits in my parents' house to this day. Cooking with Mrs. Castorley. An older generation might remember sewing or home economics, all at the middle school level. Now, at the high school, there was courses on personal finance, where you could learn to balance your checkbook, create your personal budget, consumer loans, credit cards, and the dangers associated with them. And then there was support staff at all levels, who were there not only to help the kids who needed additional support to meet the minimum standards, but they were also there to push the kids who showed a proclivity towards advanced learning so that they could achieve even greater things. These are all things that don't exist in our school department any longer because of the incremental cuts it has sustained over decades, where we have consistently placed the burden of the town's financial pressures on the shoulders of our children. Now, I've talked about the past, I've talked about the present, but I also want to look towards the future because I have great concerns for this school department, particularly as it relates to our ability to attract and retain the next generation of exceptional educators. Because when we look at the communities, the communities within a 25-mile radius of Dartmouth, there are 30 school departments. And when we look at our salary and benefits combined, we rank 27th out of 30 in terms of what we offer for salary and benefits. And that's not a good place to be. Because anyone in the private industry will tell you that the next generation is not like my generation, where I've been with the same company for 15 years. But I have new hires that come to work for me for six months to a year until the next shiny job offer comes around and they are out the door chasing the money. Now, whether we agree with that approach to life or not, that is the reality of the current job market. And there are HR departments across the country scratching their heads, trying to figure out the right combination of salary and benefits to attract the graduating class of 2025. And if we don't get competitive, we're going to be in trouble. Because I truly believe that the only reason why the quality of our education is as high as it is, is because of the exceptional educators that we have working within the department. Great educators make lemonade out of lemons. It's our educators who are standing in the gap when we underfund them on supplies and we underfund them on curriculum and we underfund them on facilities. They are standing in the gap to ensure that the quality of our education remains high despite the lack of resources that we provide to them. But what are we to do when they retire? My daughter's in the third grade now and she has had fantastic educators that have invested in her. But what are we to do when Ms. Kayler retires? What are we to do when Mrs. Reynolds retires and Mr. Kylie retires or Dr. Seb McGuire retires? Because if we don't get competitive, I will tell you who our applicants will be. It'll be the people who are first denied employment at Bourne, Falmouth, Plymouth, Mattapoyant, Marion, Rochester, Wareham, New Bedford, Fall River, Westport, Somerset, Seconk, Taunton, Attleboro, all of the vocational schools. And then, once they've exhausted their efforts at the 26 other communities that pay better than us, then they will submit their application to Dartmouth and we will have our pick of the bottom of the barrel. So I ask again, what kind of schools do we want for our children? I hope we can follow the lead and the example set for us. I hope we can follow the lead and the example set for us by the Greatest Generation and invest heavily into our schools, so that we can pass down to the next generation a school system that is at least as good as the one that we've inherited. Now, I have an amendment. So just to explain the amendment a little bit, going back to the beginning, all of our various schools at the onset of the budgeting process made a series of requests. About $450,000 worth of those requests did not make it into the budget. Now, as I shared at the school committee meeting, they weren't asking for leather-bound books, right? They're asking for necessities, reading specialists, math specialists, special education teachers, and a number of necessities that are needed to educate our children. So I'm trying to get them the funding of things that were preemptively cut out of the budget. Now, the way I'm doing that, to fund it, is that I've identified any budget line item that has increased in excess of the overall town budget increase, which is a 4.68% increase by my calculation, and my math is on the back, because I've seen some other numbers floating around. But anyway, that's, that's the bar that I set. So any departmental line item that is increasing in excess of the overall town budget increase, I'm asking them to live within the means that the school department was asked to live within last year, which is a 2.78% increase. So I'm not cutting them to zero. I'm just asking them to have a more modest increase than what was being offered, and it's nothing that our schools haven't already been request and required to do. Now, the savings that are generated by that, I am proposing that they be split two ways. 65% of the savings going to the school department, and 35% going to the FinCom Reserve, because I understand that an amendment like this could cause some turmoil, and I think it'd be wise to have a little bit of money, extra money in the FinCom Reserve to deal with what may arise. Now, I'd like to point out that the amount that's being added to the FinCom Reserve completely offsets any single one of these line items reductions, and the total amount in the FinCom Reserve would exceed all of the cuts that are being proposed in this amendment. So there would be money available to fully fund any of these line items via the FinCom Reserve, if that's warranted. Now, the last thing I wanna say is, I don't think this amendment is the right solution to the problem. The root of the problem here is that we have a revenue problem in town. It is not spending of any one of these line items, including our schools, that is causing the issues that we're in right now. We have a revenue problem, and that's what we have to fix. This is a Band-Aid for another year, and I think it's necessary to get the schools what they need to properly educate our children, but it's a Band-Aid. The root of the problem is a revenue problem. There's a number of solutions that we can consider, but we need to start considering solutions now. And I happen to agree with some members of the Finance Committee that diversifying the commercial tax base is the way to go long-term. The problem with that is that if we hit the ground running today with a solid economic development plan, we wouldn't see the fruits of those efforts in our budget for the next five to 10 years. And five to 10 years is 40 to 90% of a child's K through 12 education. They have one shot at their K through 12 education. We need a more immediate solution to fixing the revenue problem in town. I, I don't want to take money away from any one of these department line items. I, I sat down with the chief and with Mr. Barber to sort of give them the heads-up that I was doing this, and that's, that's not a comfortable conversation to have. I don't wanna have to pick and choose, but unequivocally, if I have to pick and choose which municipal services I have to, based on the total amount of revenue in the town, unequivocally, I will choose the education of my children above all else. So with that, do I need to read this verbatim? Sure thing?
Yes, please.
So I move that the, that the following budget amendments be made to, I move that the following budget adjustments be made to the budget as presented in Schedule A of the 2025 Spring Town Meeting Warrant. Reduce the Select Board Town Administrator Line Item by $80,442 from $737,322 to $656,880. Reduce the Town Accountant Line Item by $4,846 from $185,849 to $181,003. Reduce the Town Collector Line Item by $36,598 from $436,415 to $399,817. Reduce the Legal Line Item by $111,728 from $602,410 to $49682. Reduce the Facilities and Vehicle Maintenance Town Hall and Other Buildings Line Item by $22,175 from $693,109 to $670,934. Reduce the Police Department Line Item by $215,319 from $9,873,436 to $9,658,117. Reduce the Building Department Line Item by $23,569 from $648,635 to $625,066. Reduce the Sealer of Weights and Measures Line Item by $1,680 from $13,515 to $11,835. Reduce the Emergency Management Agency Line Item by $28,163 from $55,400 to $27,237. Reduce the Natural Resources Line Item by $855 from $26,161 to $25,306. Reduce the Department of Public Works Salaries Line Item by $101,143 from $3,412,586 to Reduce the Department of Public Works Expense Line Item by $72,071 from $1,9,446 to $937,375. Reduce the Youth Commission Line Item by $2,017 from $92,569 to $90,552. Reduce the Libraries Line Item by $31,918 from $1,381,267 to $1,349,349. This results in reductions totaling $732,522. Then increase the Dartmouth Public Schools Line Item by $476,139 from $55,478,512 to Increase the FinCom, the Finance Committee Reserve Line Item by $256,383 from $510,000 to $766,383. This results in increases totaling $732,522, resulting in a net change to the budget of $0.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. So I have a motion. I need a second on his, I have a second on the motion. So now we're gonna open the floor for discussion on the amendment only, okay? So we're discussing the amendment. Anybody wanna talk about the amendment? Anybody interested down here? Let me, could I please get you the microphone? Thank you. We all wanna hear from you, too.
I always wonder if there's anybody-
Will you give me your name and precinct number? You know this, Drew.
I know, but...
[laughing]
My name's Arthur Girard, I'm in Precinct 2.
Thank you.
I would like to hear from the school committee, who made up the original budget, and what, what they have to say about this amendment.
Is there anyone from the school committee who wishes to speak about this amendment? Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Nunes, Precinct 6, member of the Dartmouth School Committee. I had a discussion, and I appreciate Mr. Silva's work on this. I did have a discussion with Mr. Silva this morning, and I told him, you know, as much as I appreciate what he did, I, me, as one member of the school committee and a member, a town meeting member, could not go along with this, because it's not the policy, this person's policy, to sit here and start cutting line items to this effect to increase our budget. Could we use this money? Absolutely, without a doubt. But I, for one, am not gonna sit here, and part of my expression, banshee everybody's else's budget to satisfy mine. My personal opinion, my opinion only.
Mr. Carr, did you wanna speak?
Maybe through you, if there's any other comments, and then I'll make a comment. If, if there's any other comments from the crowd, then-
Any further discussion? Right down here, please.
My name is Robin De La Fuente. I'm from Precinct 1. My question would be to Mr. Nunes, why wouldn't it be a collective effort for the entire town-
Okay, so the questions come through me.
So sorry.
Sure. So what, what can I help you with?
Why wouldn't it be a collective effort for it to come from all of these different departments, rather than just the one, school department, taking the smallest increase in percentage versus all these other departments taking larger percentages of increase? Why wouldn't we all participate in that?
So I think what they're gonna tell you is there was a budgeting process that everybody went through, and they felt like that was the collective process, but I would allow anybody who wants to comment, we don't do debate here, but I would allow anybody else who wants to comment on that to do so. Mr. Tadlebaum, did you wanna speak?
I, I sincerely applaud and support Mr. Silva's passion and the need to properly support and fund our schools. I think that, I'd like to propose, I've talked about this with my colleagues, many of my colleagues, a little bit different approach, but try to get to the same place. We establish a group, two members of the Select Board, two members of the Finance Committee, and Mr. Carrero, and over the next four to five months, because we have some time, we go through the entire budget and find anywhere from 2% to 3% to up to 5% of the budget, and do it in a way that is with a scalpel, not with a chainsaw, and do it the right way, and come up with a way to find this money and move it to the school committee. It's a short term and possibly a long term. I don't, I think that the approach that Mr. Silva suggested is, I agree with, with John Nunes, is not the right approach, but I think that we can do it in a way that's sensible, and I think we get good participation to try to find a way to trim this budget and get money moved towards the school committee. Therefore, I would support, not support, the actual amendment.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment, who would like to speak? Mr. Bowles would like to speak on the amendment?
I do.
You do as well. Thanks.
Yep, sure. Yep. Thank you. John Souza, Precinct 4. As a member of the Finance Committee, we haven't had a chance to look at, we recently received this, and the Finance Committee has not voted on this. As a Finance Committee member personally, I'm opposed to it. But I do have to say, I volunteered as a town meeting member for decades. I've served on a number of boards and commissions over the years, and I've racked my brain over the financial woes of this town over the years, and I've never come up with a viable solution to our problems. I have to commend Mr. Silva for- -stepping up and taking a stab at it. Congratulations. I wish there were more like you. I'm certainly not the brightest bulb in the room. There are a lot of shopper minds in this room. I'm hoping the other town meetings do the same as Nate Silva, take a stab at it, and propose some solution to our woes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Would you like to speak on this amendment, on the amendment?
Is the mic still on, right? Yeah, again, just to highlight what John said, I applaud Mr. Silva, too, but the real elephant in the room is the state's formula for granting money to the suburbs. As you know, the urban cities, metropolitaries, get more school funding than we do, and the calculus is wrong. It should be revisited. That's the real elephant in the room, and we have talked about that in Finance Committee on a number of occasions, of maybe forming somehow a collaborative effort with other communities, other suburbs, to petition the state and the state's legislature to change the formula. That is the real problem. We are not getting enough money. The situation that was actually talked about with Chris Maki was that the state feels that we don't tax high enough down here, so therefore, that should be addressed. I say the calculus for the state funding formula is incorrect, and that should be visited, and I'd love to see some type of task or task force established to address that issue. Thank you.
Any further discussion? So the gentleman first with the hat, I see you, I just, I'm gonna work my way through.
Albert Lay, Precinct 7. I've got two questions. I think the real elephant in the room is why aren't we talking about an override? I mean, I think Mr. Silva did an excellent job with what he put together, but I do have big concerns with police department being cut by $215,000, the public works $100,000. I, I agree that he's gone through some method to do this, but to me, our solution is override. And $732,000 compared to a $108 million budget is chump change. So to me, someone needs to sit down and say, it's time for an override, get their override so we take care of a lot of our problems, not just the school. But again, the elephant in the room is not the state, it's us. We need to vote for an override and make the money available. Thank you.
Thank you. If you wanna pass the mic directly in front of you, this person right in front there. Thank you.
Hi, Heather Noyes-Fredette, Precinct 7. Longtime Dartmouth resident, mother of two, and a town employee, and I'd like to talk about a couple points. And we know the state funding is flat, and that hasn't changed for a very long time, and that, that algorithm that they're using hasn't changed for a very long time. But I think that, I've spoke at many of your meetings, and I think that we need to stop kicking the proverbial can down the road, because the people that are suffering are our kids and our teachers, who are doing the best with what we have. I know our budget is large, but the amount of children and the amount of Dartmouth Public School employees far outseats any other department. So our pie is gonna be bigger, but to continuously be told here, felt that we can do more with less, makes teachers feel like they don't matter. And when the children start to hear that their town isn't behind them, it gives them a different perception of their education as well. And I think that it's time for us to take a stand, and it's taken a collective group of us to be able to, I mean, behind Nate, stand up in front of you and say that we're tired that our kids keep on paying for this, and our kids need what they need, and just because they can't vote doesn't mean they shouldn't be considered. So you're gonna hear a collective voice of parents standing up, fighting for their kids, because no one else seems to be.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On the back.
Hi, I'm Karen MacArthur in Precinct 7. We moved here 22 years ago. Our kids were in the schools. They have now aged out, but I wanna ask a question of clarification. I really appreciate the creative thinking and the detail that Mr. Silva has presented. My, also, my expertise is in nonprofit finance in churches. So on the back, on the side of the amendment that has the color, to the right of the green, I understand, is that a list of, of amounts? Each department gets a certain amount budgeted, and they may not exceed that amount, but at the end of the year, if they have extra money, it gets turned back. Am I understanding correctly that that amount, those amounts total $1.75 million returned to the town? If you then go back to the front page, he's proposing 14 cuts. Of those 14, 10 of those are less than the amount they turned in. Only four of those totaling, I believe, $145,000 are in excess of what they didn't need. In other words, our departments are budgeting, staying within their budget, responsibly returning money to the town, but this would have, if this had happened two years ago, this would have only been a problem of $145,000, and we have a reserve of $250 to cover it. I think it's really creative thinking, and I think it will push us to support our kids like many of us, if not most of us in the room, want to be able to do.
Thank you. Mr. Carrero, do you wanna speak to the turnback column?
Sure. Can I speak in general, too?
Can you, can you speak to the turnbacks, though, as well?
Sure.
Is that, are those accurate?
Well, not having done a deep dive into this, and I appreciate Nate and the work that you've done with this, the group that you have, and other folks that have met with me over the course of the last year, couple of years now, not having a deep dive, done a deep dive into these numbers, the turnbacks, I would say, are probably just a little maybe misleading, because some of these amounts are actual positions that we haven't filled. For instance, the Town Collector, I can speak to that, because I was the Town Collector. That was a position that I held in conjunction with the Town Treasurer, Budget Director of Finance for a whole entire year. We didn't replace that person. So we have a person in that position now. So this goes back to FY '24, I guess. Also, you look at DPW, $312,000. Right now, they have currently 14 positions that are vacant. So those positions are in the budget unfunded. So anytime that happens, those go back to, you know, a turnback situation. So these amounts that are in here are, some of them are funded positions that we currently have employees in place that are getting paid to the budget. So that's on the
Great, and then did you have some general comments you wanted to make on the amendment?
So, you know, the comment was brought up about an override and shortage of revenues. Right now, we're generating about $109 million in revenues. The budget's at $108 million and a half. We've, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee have, I think, in the last decade, if you will, you know, we're going back to my predecessor's predecessor, I see him sitting in the audience at Ike Pone, to have the town remain fiscally flexible. And what that means is, for instance, this year in the FY26 budget, we were able to work out the school choice, weaning off that over the next five years, totaling about $1 million. So these small initiatives that we're doing, working one-on-one with the schools, you know, it's hard to say that it's gonna happen overnight. And we're trying to do that, trying to mitigate our health insurance costs for the employees. We know that that's a huge increase, not only for the town, but for the employees. We're talking about maybe joining different JPAs, we're searching that right now. So through the cost of the FY26 budget, going into FY27, we want to make sure that the revenues that we have can keep the current employees in place. We obviously know that there's a need for additional revenues, but we need time to look at that. And we've talked about that in long term, we've talked about that at the Finance Committee level, at the Select Board level, that we just don't generate, as Nate had mentioned, enough revenues in town. So if we're continuing on this path, we have to be able to do that. The only way to generate, to reduce the revenues is you cut expense, or you ask for an override, which is a permanent increase to the levy. And, you know, this is what we, this is what we're analyzing now through the long-term capital, through the budget process in FY27, ways that we can mitigate expenses for the town, but yet be able to put back more to the schools and to other departments. So that's just generally speaking on the amendment here. Also, when you look at these cuts, I'll wrap up with this, you know, we look at what was proposed here, 80% of the budget, 85% of the budget throughout this entire town, $108 million, is salaries. I mean, when you look at it, these are, these are actually people. So if we're cutting the police by $215,000, that's three police officers. If we're looking at other positions, it's, you know, Public Works, that's a, that's a position, two positions. So the same pain that the schools have felt over the last couple of years is what the town is. And I think that's pretty much what we're trying to say here, is that the shortage of revenues is not allowing us to keep up with the pace of expense. And again, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee are on track with that, and we're looking to address the majority of that in FY27, in FY26, FY27. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have, someone's made a motion to move the question. All in favor of moving the question, raise your hand, or we'll continue discussion. If you are opposed to moving the question, please raise your hand. I needed two-thirds. I don't think I had two-thirds to move the question, so I think we're gonna continue the discussion. Any further comments? Right here.
Peter Nolton, Precinct 6. I agree with that comments that this really doesn't address the issue, which is one of revenue. I completely agree with that with the people who've been talking about that. But I support this amendment because I think it's a wake-up call for us. And I just want to throw out a few figures, which to me is why I highlight to support the amendment, of the increases to these particular departments over the last couple of years. Since 2023, these are back-of-the-napkin calculations that I've made based upon what the town gave us in the budget. Community services increased by 29%. The budget of the DPW went up 36%. The budget for the public safety went up 26%. The budget for health insurance went up 30%. And mind you, employees pay 46% of the premium on healthcare, which means some folks get a $5 to $10 an hour cut in pay as a result of having to buy private health insurance. Education budget increased by 8%. This is why we're talking about this situation, because people have not been paying attention in our town. And I think we really need to starkly pay much more attention to the education budget in this town, because it is our future. My two sons went through Dartmouth, my youngest sister went through Dartmouth. I've lived in Dartmouth off and on my whole life. The reason why we were here with my kids is because of the education system in Dartmouth. I know a lot of people who work in the education system, and they're really worried about our education system. The cuts in the positions last year that were made, I think were unconscionable. We have to stop that bleeding. We need to begin to support, it's 61% of our budget. We need to continue to support the future of our children and the future of our town. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion, or are we ready to vote?
Jim Conlin, Precinct 8. I want to support the comment made earlier that override is not a dirty word. Override is a way for a town to set its budget, to take a budget increase that is equal to the inflation that's going on. Just, it's override, when it was enacted in the early 1980s, I was on a town finance committee then, was a response, a very emotional response by the voters to a period of high tax increases. And the process that went on then was a very political, talk radio, arbitrary process. And what got implemented was basically saying it's very, very, very difficult to make, to take a town tax levy up by more than, a very arbitrary number. Somebody reached into a dark place and came up with 2.5%. And so Gary can go on for 10 minutes about the finer points of this, but basically what it means is that if we're in an environment where costs are increasing by 3% and 4%, and certainly health insurance is this, the town, as practical matter, cannot increase its tax levy, that's by more than 2.5. I know there are adjustments in that, but, and so what's needed is a little bit of political courage on the part of those who are doing budgets to say, okay, we value education, we value the quality of public services, and, and we won't apologize very much about increasing your taxes by an amount that is in the neighborhood of the rate of inflation you're feeling in, or perhaps experiencing in your income in other cases. So I would, I would endorse this. I applaud the proposal to say, okay, we recognize that this is a, to use the current term, chainsaw solution to the problem, and kicking a third of the, of the amount cut out back through the mechanism of the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to patch up the things that were, that need, need patching. So I do support this, this amendment, and I would also strongly encourage the people who are leading the town budget process to get realistic about what kind of funding we should have for education. Funding education adequately is the surest way to, the surest way to help your kid not to be sleeping on your couch and flipping burgers when he's 25 years old. So I support the measure, and I appeal for courage from the budget leaders in, in future years. Thank you.
And I, I know there's some people behind you. Ms. Moore, I see you, but there are some people who haven't spoken today, so I'd like to give them the opportunity first if they'd like to speak. Yes, right there. The person right there, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Souza, Precinct 7. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for acknowledging me, and thank you for the amendment. I'm standing in support of it, both as a proud product of Dartmouth Public Schools and a proud parent of a current student. I support this amendment, not because it's a perfect solution to a long-term revenue problem, but because it is a brave offering to show that a budget is a values document, and it needs to be a shared commitment across our entire community, and not the sole burden of our kids and the leaders in their schools. So, thank you.
Could you pass the mic forward to Ms. Moore? Thank you.
Margot Moore, Precinct 8. I have two questions. Mr. Tattelbaum made the suggestion that should we not, should we vote this down, that his opinion was a better solution would be for the Select Board and the Finance Committee to sit down between now and the, I assume he meant the beginning of the school year, to go through it. Should we vote it down, is there, what is our guarantee that they would commit to finding that $476,139 that's being proposed here? So that's question one. Do you want two?
Sure. I mean, the, I heard, I heard the proposal, I'm not sure how we word an amendment that makes it binding, so I think it would be a matter of trust.
Okay.
And I'll get to you, Mr. Tattelbaum, do you want to address it?
Mr. Carrero and I have spoken before about forming a committee that would be two Select Board reps, two FinCom reps, two School Committee reps, as well as the heads of those departments. There is other communities that have that, and they meet regularly to talk about the entire budget, rather than individual committee budgets or department budgets. So we have talked about that for a number of months, and it is something, we're sort of one of those things, again, waiting for the new town administrator to be on board. So that is something that is in the works.
And did you have a second?
More than a, more than a hope, it is a commitment.
Did you have a, did you have a second?
My other question, maybe Mr. Carrero can answer this, is are we charging short-term rental, the short-term rental room tax that the state allows us to? Fairhaven voted a bylaw in a few years ago that they get, I think that the state law allows communities, should they so choose, to have the room, excuse me, the room, the room tax like you do for hotels on short-term rentals. They also, the state law allows you to have a, a registration fee for everyone every year, which would cover any, like, you know, the fire department checking them out and that. And finally, they also allow a fairly good percentage for a community impact fee, which is to be used for like roads and other community things. And the last economic study that I saw in Dartmouth was, I'm, I'm not absolutely accurate here, but there are at least 200 short-term rentals, you know, Airbnb's, VBRO. It seems to me if you do just conservative numbers, you're leaving about anywhere from $1.5 to $2 million on the table. If, I mean, there's a wonderful revenue source for you, are we taking advantage of this?
So let me see if I can get an answer to that. Mr. Carrero, can you speak to the short-term rental tax in Dartmouth?
Yes, we are. Meals and room occupancy and meals tax we charge.
So, so we can't hear you, and you're gonna have to put your follow-up questions through me.
Yes.
So would you have a follow-up question?
Short-term rentals.
So she, she's asking?
Specifically, I'm not talking about hotels. I'm talking about things like Airbnb and VBRO. Friends I know who have them, they don't have any, they don't have to pay taxes, they don't have to do anything. I mean, I hate to throw those guys under the bus, but are we specifically taking advantage of the money from the short-term rentals?
Yes.
So, okay, so I'm hearing you say yes. Do you, are you looking, do you have a sense of how much that is, Mr. Carrero?
Oof, I say 1 point, maybe 1.2 million, I'm looking at my town.
So about $1.2 million? Okay. Any further discussion? On the end here. So I'm gonna acknowledge Mrs. Stone first, and then the gentleman.
Laura Stone, Precinct 8. So I just wanted to make a comment about Nate's amendment, and reiterate that I don't think it's a perfect solution. It doesn't address the long-term revenue. As Mr. Souza on the Finance Committee has said, we've come back cyclically to this issue in our town many, many times before. But I think what Nate does in his amendment is he puts a certain amount of money back in the Finance Committee Reserve, which allows then Select Board and Finance Committee to go back to the drawing board. It's a moment in time here to say, we don't want the unfair burden to be placed on the schools to address the budget shortfall. I'll give an example. I know that the chief is not happy about this, nor are all of us, that we couldn't fill all positions in the Police Department last year through the academy, and some of that money had to be turned back. Again, it's not ideal, it's not what we would want, but do, will that $215,319 actually be used? It's rhetorical, I don't need it to be answered. I think what this amendment does is it says, we're not satisfied, we don't think that the budget was hammered out enough and was fair enough. And here's one way that we could solve that. And then to Mrs. Brooks' point, as select woman, chairperson, I just want to call your attention to, Dartmouth was hugely successful in convening this working group that you're talking about, because I convened it as a member of the Select Board. And about 10 to 12 years ago, we did not put the budget forward without the Finance Committee, the Select Board, the chair, the chief, DPW, which in this case would be Mr. Barber, and the school superintendent and Finance Committee, or Finance Administrator, meeting, at least for three, two to three working group sessions, so that the burden was looked at and shared and worked through, and then presented to this body. So the fact that that's been dropped out, and that you no longer do that, is an issue. It's why we're in this discussion and why we're having it right now. So I would just say to Mr. Tattelbaum, to Ms. Brooks, yes, please bring that back. It was very successful, and it's what got us out of a jam like we're in right now. So I, anyway, I support the amendment, again, not because it's perfect, but because it's elegant in the moment that we find ourselves.
So the gentleman on the aisle there in the red shirt, please.
Jim Griffith, Precinct 2. I was a professor at a public university where the faculty and staff were constantly asked to do more with less. And I can assure you that the consequences of that, heroism notwithstanding on the part of the teachers and the staff of the Dartmouth school system, the consequences of that are corrosive in ways that you cannot imagine, and in ways that we do not want to happen in the Dartmouth school system. I support this amendment as a Band-Aid in the way that it was described by the author. I hope that we get on to other ways, whether it's overriding or whatever else might come later, but we need to begin.
Mr. Carrero, did you have something else you wanted to add?
So, Madam Moderator, just a point of clarification, on the 256, 383 that the gentleman wants to put into the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, what is the purpose of that? What would, what would the, what's the vision of that, of that amount of money being put in there?
Mr. Silva, could we get him on the microphone, please?
The purpose of that is to provide, because like I said, I think it's not a perfect solution, as we can all acknowledge, and there would certainly be some unintended consequences to making budget modifications drastic, right? So by having a little bit of extra money in the FinCom Reserve, I think would be a wise idea. I think you could make the argument that this is an unforeseen, if this amendment passes... I think you could make the argument that this is an unforeseen, if this amendment passes, right, it's an unforeseen event, that none of these departments could have anticipated, and therefore be open to making their case to the Finance Committee as to why additional funding beyond what's presented here is necessary.
Thank you. Did you have some follow-up? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the Finance Committee Reserve Fund is specific to what can be used on that line item. I'll give you an example, a boiler blows up in the School Department, something goes wrong at the Town Hall. So that is very specific, except by Mass. General Law. I think that putting this into the Reserve Fund, currently we have about $510,000 in that account. We've, we've budgeted that for a number of years now. And if you look at the past trend on that account, there's been minimal expense to that account. So I think adding to, adding to that, an assumption that we're gonna then go back and use it for anything else but a very unforeseen item, is probably not the best solution. I would recommend that, and this is only my recommendation, that the 256 does not be included in the mix, that stays in the operational part of the budget, and then Town Meeting consider the 476.
So we have a recommendation from Mr. Carrero. Ms. Hamm, you'd like to speak.
Terry Hamm, Precinct 4. I've been on the Finance Committee coming up on 10 years, and since I've joined the Finance Committee, this has been a problem, and it's been addressed in different ways, and it's pretty clear that we don't know what the solution to the problem is, because we have residents who live on fixed income, who it would be a hardship to increase taxes. We have many people who don't have children, including me in the system, and that may be a secondary service for them. And what we've found, I think, is that people experience town government by what they use. They don't really know the big picture. And the Finance Committee reviewed this budget very, very carefully. We asked a million questions of the School District and other departments, and we feel comfortable supporting this with, you know, the caveats that we have. And that's the only obstacle that I see right now, is that the time that it would take to review this proposal, and be reassured that it would work. Because apart from that, I would support it. And I want to say that Mr. Silva has attended meetings in every single department in the town this year. He has developed a rela, I'm not done, hold on, hold on. He has developed a working relationship with department heads. There was a problem that the schools were having with dependence on school choice money, and because of the input of a Finance Committee member and residents, a solution was proposed. And that's an example. The thing that Mr. Silva has done in addition to that is recruit other people to be involved. And we need people to be involved in generating solutions to this problem, because it's a prob, it's not just a problem for the schools, it's a problem for the town. We can't do what we need to do in DPW with the funds that we have. Even some of the smaller departments would, would like to have a bigger budget, obviously. So I wanted to say we don't see waste in the budget. If we had questions about it, especially the schools, you know, this committee asks millions of questions, hours and hours of the schools. We would have asked questions about it, and we haven't seen that. So I do support the amendment, because I think that we need to do something, and it is something. The only caution I have is we haven't really looked at it in detail enough to know what the impacts would be in the other budgets.
Thank you. Any further discussion here?
Wayne Hawes, Precinct 2. You did an incredible job. However, I think it is late in the game. And I would like to see Mr. Tattelbaum's suggestion, Ms. Brooks' suggestion of working this year to try to use a scalpel and, and find a way to get around it with this in the background. And if we know that it can't be done, then we need to do something next year in the meeting. I hate to kick the can down the road, but we are late in the game. So I'm gonna vote against this, but I like the idea, I like your work, and I think that we should hold it out. And one other thing that has not been brought up is real estate values are so dependent upon schools. And if we allow our schools to slip, all of us will see a depreciation, or not as rapid a gain in our real estate. So it does affect us all.
Thank you. Wait a minute. I want to see if there's anyone else who wants to speak, because you all have had a lot of time to speak. Anybody else, any further discussion on this? We've got a lot of, right there, please. You're not that easy to see in the back. I, it's.
Linda Garibaldi, Precinct 8. I'm also a library trustee. I think two things, I certainly agree, especially with the last gentleman, and I certainly agree with Mr. Tattelbaum's solution. I think that's a good idea. I find it very disconcerting that so many people are in favor of this sort of last-minute, although well-thought-out, proposal, because it, it says to me that you're saying that all of these budgets have all this extra money in them that they could easily do without, that we all put fluff in our budget. And I guess the second, and I certainly don't agree with that, because a library, we're not putting fluff in that budget, and we spend a whole lot of time coming up with the budget, and, and working out compromises and negotiations, and answers lots of questions, and go over what we really need. And, and I, and that's the part that worries me, and why I cannot vote for it, because I always, I do trust that all the other departments and the other, you know, boards, that they do the same thing. And we're not putting a little extra in each year, just in case something happens. We're doing bare bones, and, and we could sure do with more money, so that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Coughlin, I see you. I'm gonna let Nate respond to, Mr. Silva respond to that first, please.
So I apologize if I was not clear.
Will you please give me your name and precinct?
I'm sorry. Nathan Silva, Precinct 6. Apologize if I was not clear. I do not want it to be understood that there is fluff in the library's budget, or, or the police's budget, or the DPW budget. That is not my position, that is not my, my, my opinion at all. My, my point is, is that in the recent history, or even not-so-recent history, we have asked our schools, and our schools alone, to deal with the financial pressures of the town. And there is one customer of the School Department, right? That's the children of this town. No adult in this room, or in our community, receives the services provided by the schools. And it is not fair to our children to ask them to consistently carry the burden of the town's financial pressures. And to the point of, this is last minute, sure, it is presented in this venue last minute, but I've spent a lot of time over the past year, since I spoke at Town Meeting last year, meeting with many people, and reviewing the details of our town budget, of our school budget. This is not a haphazard, you know, throw something against the wall and hope it sticks. My, my point, and I want to be crystal clear, is not, I do not want these departments, the library, the police, the DPW, emergency management, to lose their budgets. I don't. But I want my children to have a better education, more so than I want these other departments to be funded at the levels they are. And I think that's an important distinction to make.
Thank you. In the back row, could you provide a microphone there, please?
Hi, Elizabeth Coughlin, Precinct 4, School Committee, speaking for myself. I have great appreciation for Mr. Silva. He has been a huge booster for the schools. And when he said he was going to bring this up, he said, at the very least, I hope we have, this brings a discussion of the need for revenue, and for more resources for our schools, but not only our schools, all the other departments. It doesn't solve the problem. We have a revenue problem, as Mr. Silva said. My worry is, if we pass this, we are gonna create acrimony within the town, and it will make us, it harder to reach a solution. Harder, if it is an override, to come together and figure that out. Clearly, I support the schools. I think healthcare is a huge driver of the problems for the town. Anyway, the problem is revenue, and that's an ongoing problem. This doesn't solve it, and I'm worried that it'll make it harder to solve. So I'm gonna vote against it, but I totally support Mr. Silva.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons, you would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Carrie Parsons. I've, I've been a town resident since 2002. I joined Finance Committee a couple of years ago because I saw, obviously, our budget was in a crisis. We were heading very quickly off of an edge. And I thought, I wanted to understand this better as a town person. I saw that our schools, like what everybody's saying, that were letting teachers go year after year, and I wanted to see that stop. But it wasn't until I joined the Finance Committee that I understood the grave, how bad it is. It's, it's, it's hard. I don't support this amendment, and the reason I don't support this amendment is because it is going to cause ruckus throughout the whole entire town. And that's something that's gonna be difficult for our town to recover from. This isn't just gonna affect the schools, it is gonna affect every single person. It's gonna affect our Police Department, our libraries, all of our support staff, all of our waterworks, everything that our town, it's a balancing, a balancing act. But I have to give kudos to Nate, because he's trying to shed light on a huge problem that our town just doesn't want to talk about, because it, we need more money. And this is an issue, obviously. But my question is, if this was to pass, I would like to ask Mr. Kylie, if he's here, what he would do with the money.
Mr. Kylie, are you here, and would you be willing to talk about how the money would be spent? Mr. Kylie, come on down.
So in terms of, if, if the Town Meeting were to vote additional funding to the School Department budget, we would have a process in which we would present recommendations to the School Committee, and the School Committee controls our budget, it's within their authority. They would then allocate money according to their priorities. We do have a strategic plan in place that is new this year, and if you haven't seen it, you should go on our website and check it out. That guides our decision-making process, and that is how additional funds would be allocated.
Thank you. Mr. Garvin, you said you would like to speak on this?
Yeah, I just want, I want to point out some things. You know, we've worked very hard on these budgets, there's been a lot of negotiations going back and forth. And one of the things that we looked at this year was actual spending, because budgets tend to be political, but actual spending is, these are the amounts that people are actually spending. General Government, last two years averaged 11.3% increase. Public Safety, 1%. Public Works, 2.6. I'm sorry, Community Service, 2.6. Public Works, .9. That probably had something to do with no snow. Dartmouth Schools, 4.7%. New Bedford Voke, 5.5%. Employee Benefits, 1.3%. And Property and Liability Insurance, 12.4%. So in actual spending, property and liability expense went through the roof. The problem here isn't, the problem isn't that, you know, the town accountant, or the youth commission, are taking money away from them. The problem is state aid. State aid is runs about, is running about 2%. So if you look at 2% every year from state aid in the Dartmouth Public Schools, which is the biggest budget by far, is spending 4.7%, there's gonna be a problem. So, you know, the, the School Committee voted for this, for this budget, and all the department heads, we all collaborated. And I just think that if, if this goes through, there's, I believe there's gonna be chaos in a lot of different departments, and I definitely am against this, this amendment.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of, we're voting on the amendment, so just to be clear, we're voting on the amendment, and then we're gonna go back.
This is the amendment as it is. I have not heard a change in the amendment, so the amendment is as projected up on the screen, okay?
Yes?
I heard you offered a suggestion to the amendment, whether it was received, if the amendment's being discussed.
So he offered a suggestion, but I didn't hear a motion for it. So what I have is, this is what I have a motion and a second on. This is, this is the amendment as, as it's written, is what we've been discussing, okay? So all in favor of the amendment as shown on the screen, please. Mr. Tattelbaum, are you, are you voting for me? It's gotta be new information and meaningful.
Okay. If it requires an amendment to the amendment, so that we can do it in a different style, that's what I'm offering, as a choice. To get to this amount or more, if you're offering, if you're asking me to offer an amendment to make that choice.
I'm not asking for an amendment. I'm just noting why I have, why it's being voted this way.
No.
I think we want to vote. All in favor of the amendment as shown on the screen, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. I think the amendment fails. I know the amendment fails at.
Tell a count.
Sure. Absolutely. I need seven people to stand up, Mr. Silva. So can you get seven of you? Fantastic. Let's do a tell-a-count. Okay, so if you are in favor of the amendment as shown on the screen, and you are sitting in this section right here, please raise your hand. And please, please keep it up until I ask you to take it down. I want to make sure that we count every vote, okay? So this section only right now, we're gonna move along. Okay, you can take, put your hand down there. This center section right here in front of me, could you please raise your hand if you are in favor of the amendment as shown on the screen currently? The final section over there, if you are in favor of the budget amendment, please raise your hand. You may put your hands down over here. If you are on stage, and you are in favor, if you're a Town Meeting member, and in favor of the budget amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. So Select Board and Finance Committee. So Select Board and Finance Committee. Thank you. So we need to check, don't we check those numbers right now? If you are in this section, and you are opposed to the budget amendment, please indicate by raising your hand, and please keep it up till I can, and you're a town meeting member. Thank you. You may put your hand down. If you're in the center section, and you are opposed to the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. If you are in this final section, and you are in opposition to this amendment, please indicate by raising your hand, please. Thank you. You may put your hands down here. If you are on stage, and you're a town meeting member in opposition to the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. The amendment fails at 1:03 PM. I have another amendment that is, it is 60 to 101. I have another amendment that's been given to me on Article 10, and I'm going to recognize Mr. Gavon to present that amendment.
Can I get it back? Because I have a copy.
Oh, yes, you need a copy of it?
Yeah, I don't have a copy here.
I'm sorry? Well, are you doing, we have, I don't know how many we have present. You could add them. If you could have people who abstained. If you want to do a quorum call, I'm not sure how we're going to get the budget passed. It's more than quorum. It's more than quorum if you add them together. Okay, it's more than quorum. 147 is a quorum? 147, according to our town clerk, is the quorum.
Hello, Bob Gavon, Precinct 9. I'm making an amendment to Article 10, Schedule A, fiscal year 2026, above our budget appropriation, to reduce the professional salary, town administrator salary line, under the category of general government, Select Board Town Administrator, by $24,804, and increase the operating budget under the category Dartmouth Public Schools by $24,804.
Thank you, Mr. Gavon. I'm going to probably grab that back from you. So we have an amendment before us. So we have an amendment before us, and the amendment is to reduce the professional salaries for the town administrator salary line item in the category of general government, Select Board Town Administrator, by $24,804, and increase the general operating budget under the category of Dartmouth Public Schools by $24,804. I'm assuming you're moving that?
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on this amendment that's before us?
Do you want me to explain it?
Sure, you're welcome to summarize it.
Okay. Actual spending under general government has increased 11.3% each year at last past, last two years. I only did two years because COVID created a lot of different numbers. This budget is under the direct control of the Select Board. It's not like the school committee, where there's a school committee or other departments. The Select Board can, and I just want to make, these are some facts. Select Board can hire anyone they want. Select Board is responsible for negotiating the contract. FinCom evaluates the whole budget for reasonableness and to ensure that the residents are getting value for their money. FinCom can recommend any line item if they disagree, disagree with anything. We are not a rubber stamp. When it was presented that the salary was 12.4% higher than the previous town administrator who had a tremendous amount of experience, we were shocked. So we are recommending that the previous salary of the town administrator be used, and we actually feel that's pretty generous, based on the amount of experience that the new town administrator has. Also, the process, the search for the town administrator went over a year. And then all of a sudden, there was an interview, a vote, a vote for an offer of a contract, and in a closed-door meeting, a contract was signed in two hours. I will leave that up to you to decide what you think about that. That's all I have.
Hello? Mrs. Brooks, would you like to be recognized?
Yes, I would.
I want to say something.
Thank you.
We're going to recognize Mr. Savastano first.
I want to say something. The last statement was completely inaccurate. I got to tell you that I have advised this board exhaustively over the last year-plus through the town administrator research, the search for town administrator. They went out, and I believe, as Brooks is going to comment in more detail on this, but they went through an exhaustive search through a state agency who they hired to find candidates. After that exhaustive search, they narrowed it down to finalists, did interviews, and offered the job to somebody. That person, who had no town administrator experience, no assistant town administrator experience, met with us over three hours and argued exhaustively over the contract that I drafted. Now, I drafted a very town-friendly contract. That's my job to protect the town. She ultimately turned down the town, even though she had no town administrator experience, saying we weren't paying her enough. The town went back out, did a second search through a different mechanism. They decided to then submit for resumes through themselves, basically creating their own search committee, so as not to spend another $15,000 on a search through an agency or a company. They, as they're supposed to do, as advised by council, they had a subcommittee of less than a majority who reviewed the resumes in private. The reason why this process is set up through the open meeting law is so that people will apply. If everybody knows that their resumes are going to be public when they apply, they're going to be afraid for their current jobs, so they're not going to apply. The subcommittee of the Select Board reviewed resumes, and despite the fact that this was the second time around, only got, in their mind, one candidate that met their qualifications. That was the only finalist. You can have up to three, and then you do the interviews in open session. Unfortunately, they only had one finalist. They followed my advice along the way, they followed the open meeting along the way. There was nothing subversive about this, despite the comments to the contrary, both in the media and here today. So I feel obligated to defend the board. They've done it correctly. They came, and they chose a candidate. And the reason why it happened so quickly is because I gave Mr. Hadad my contract, which is brutal, by the way. Mr. Hadad only had a couple of minor suggested changes to it, as opposed to the prior candidate who tried to tear it apart and submit her own contract, which completely contradicted with most of the terms in the contract that I drafted. So that's why the discussion in executive session happened quickly. Now, when I drafted this very similar contract for David Kressman years ago, when he first started, he did the same thing. He made one minor suggested change to the contract. Three years later, when the contract came up for renewal, I got to know Mr. Kressman. I kind of jokingly apologized, "I'm sorry, I know that contract was pretty brutal." And he said, "I wasn't worried about it. I knew I would do a good job, so it wouldn't be a problem." Which is the same approach that Mr. Hadad provided. So, you know, I'm just talking about the process. I'll let the Select Board talk about their choice of candidates. But to suggest that the Select Board did anything underhanded is completely wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding is you would like to speak?
Thank you. I apologize. This will not be brief. Sean McGinnis stepped down, stepped away in June 2024. The Select Board appointed co-intrum town administrators to continue operations until a successful candidate was hired. Select Board hired the Collins Center to conduct a search and lead the initial interviews, which occurred in August of 2024. The Select Board appointed non-elected, non-employee residents of Dartmouth to a screening committee in September of 2024. The screening committee conducted a paper screening and conducted the first round of interviews, November, two dates in November 2024. Ultimately, the names of four potential candidates were forwarded to the Select Board. The Select Board publicly interviewed all four candidates over two nights in December of 2024. Subsequently, the school, sorry, the Select Board selected one candidate to enter into negotiations for the position. Negotiations were eye-opening, and ultimately resulted in a contract refusal. A candidate with no prior experience as town administrator or as assistant town administrator turned down the job offer, claiming that $190,000 was insufficient for the amount of work and responsibility that goes with the position. She also objected to significant portions of the contract drafted by town council. The Select Board then considered their options. Hire another firm at an additional expense and further extend the already lengthy process, or post for a candidate on a number of media outlets available to us, and simultaneously spread the word to town administrators in other mass communities. This resulted in 20 applications, however few with prior town administrator experience. Two members of the Select Board were assigned to review all applications and determine that only one single candidate met our criteria. The Select Board first reviewed this candidate in executive session, as is done with all initial candidates, so as not to jeopardize his current position. This also allowed Select Board members to vet this candidate with the knowledge that should this candidate not be the match, we were still in the window of selecting a firm and moving forward in the process. The candidate was given a copy of the contract drafted by town council and benefits package in order to initiate the process. The Select Board invited the candidate to an open interview session, and all town department heads and employees were encouraged to submit questions and attend the meeting. Since the agenda was posted, Select Board members received favorable feedback regarding the work previously conducted by this candidate while employed in Dartmouth. The interview was held during the April 28 Select Board meeting. The candidate's answers and demeanor solidified the Select Board members' initial impressions. A contract was able to be negotiated in executive session with the candidate asking for few changes to the council's draft. The announcement of Cody Hadad as the new town administrator was made. The Select Board stands behind the process and the candidate, and we look forward to Dartmouth's success with Cody in the town administrator role. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment before us? We ready to vote on it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Ian McGonigal, Precinct 4. Just one quick question. You're under contract with this candidate, they're in position. We're essentially recommending breaking that contract, which I'm sure will have some sort of circumstances?
Do you want to speak to it, or do you want council to speak to it? Go ahead.
Town meeting only has the ability to reduce funding in the budget, not to break the contract. The contract is between the board of selectmen and the individual. I'm sure, Tony Savastano.
Mr. Savastano, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, and in addition to legal claims a candidate may make, breach of contract would also have potential equitable claims, estoppel claims, because he gave up a job, he gave notice on his prior job to come to Dartmouth. He gave 90 days' notice, because that's what his contract called for, and he wanted to be fair to his prior job. So he now would be without a job if he did that, and we ended up in a contract dispute.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote on this amendment? Jeez. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay. All in favor of the amendment as presented, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The amendment fails at 117. Okay, I'm going to go back to Article 10, the budget that's before you, and we're going to go through and clear the holds. Okay? So, the first hold I heard was on Select Board Town Administrator. Do we have anybody who wants to? Yes.
Jacqueline Figueroa, Precinct 8. My question is regarding the clerical line. And in watching the warrant explanation, which was well-done, Mr. Carrero had mentioned the only position that was new was a floating clerical. My question is, there's money in, you know, an increase in the clerical for the Select Board, and I'm wondering if that floater position is part of that, or if the salary for that person is split amongst the departments that are going to use that floater?
Let me see if I can get your question.
So that floater position is, was designed for the Finance Conservation Office. So what happens when they're shared between the collector's office, the expense is in the collector's office. That's shared between the collectors, the accountants, and the conservation. So there's a need in the conservation office at the moment for clerical staff. We thought that for the short term, that that would be an approach. We're looking at other potential, if we have to hire anybody in Town Hall or what have you, to look at a hybrid approach where we can have employees work as, in multiple departments. For efficiency.
May I follow up?
Sure.
Therefore, all right, the increase in salary that is budgeted, is it strictly pay increases, you know, incremental pay increases?
Go ahead, Mr. Carrero.
So as part of this budget, if you recall, members that are here for the fall town meeting, we have an article in the fall town meeting to supplement the budget for COLAR increases. So within this budget, within the $108,500,032 budget, I have settled all contracts for all the unions, and that does not, Jim would have to, Mr. Kylie would have to speak on the schools. So we've settled all those contracts, so you won't see an article in the fall for, that's just generally speaking, if there are other questions. You won't see an article in the fall for COLAR increase.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for this category before we move on? Or have we cleared that hold? Okay. Next hold I have is for legal fees. Next hold I have is for legal fees. Who called the hold on that? Anybody? Yep. Mr. Figurito.
Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct 8. I'm just curious, that's all, because there's such a big jump in what has been budgeted. And I guess I'm curious, if it's appropriate, you know, why that is. Is it an anticipation?
Let me see if I can get you an answer. Mr. Carrero.
So, I can speak generally about why the budget's increased. I can't talk about specific items, obviously, because there's legal ramifications for that. But, you know, we have items such as labor, labor council that we're dealing with, that's in here. We also have Bliss Corner. You know, that's still ongoing. And just the normal, everyday items that we need for legal counsel. So, this is all wrapped up into this budget. That's the reason why there's a slight increase into this. And the 40B projects that are coming on board.
Do you have a follow-up question for me?
Therefore, it's anticipation of a couple of big things.
Yeah.
I kind of guessed that, but I wanted to ask.
Ongoing and items that are coming on the docket for the fiscal year.
Anything else on this line item? On the aisle, please.
Erica Correa, Precinct 5. I'd like to know when the last time this was sent out to bid.
The last time we had legal counsel.
When was the last time legal services went out for bid?
Early 2010.
It hasn't been a bidding process.
Yeah, so the town's not required to. Now, I know a number of years ago, I believe, an RFP was issued, and the town ended up staying with Attorney Savistano at that point in time, based on the proposals that they had received. Hope that answers your question.
Are we clear with this budget item, this line item? Okay, moving on. The next hold I have is for police department. Who called that hold? I'm sorry. You're right, election registration. Sorry. Who called the hold on election registration? Okay, in the back there, please.
Gentlemen, I'm Precinct 9. Thank you. This seems like such a silly question in light of all the heavy things we've been talking about. But the $1,500 for that board, no other board gets a stipend, so I'm just surprised to see that and wanted an explanation.
It's a stipend, and it's, we accepted a mass general law that allows for the town clerk to receive a stipend to be a member of the Board of Registarians because of the extra duties that the town clerk incurs during election periods.
Thank you. Okay, anything else there? Moving on. Now, let's go to the police. Who called the hold on the police department? Mrs. Figurito.
Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct 8. My question is related to crossing guards. We did have crossing guards for our schools, and for the past few years, we haven't. And I just wondered if there was any thought about reinstating some. I'm not convinced that we needed the amount that we had in the past. But I see three potential needs for crossing guards, for DeMello, for Quinn, and for the middle school intersection of Hawthorne and Slocombe. So, I was curious, because it can't be a big-ticket item, I don't think. And there's a concern for the safety of not just children, but also adults who are crossing in these areas that, you know, have a lot of traffic at school entrance times and school dismissal times.
Chief Leveque, do you want to talk about any of this?
Brian Leveque, Chief of Police. The initial change was due to our inability to fill those positions. At that point, we had to ensure the safety of the students, and what we did is heavy enforcement on the traffic in that area, meaning the 20 mile an hour speed limit. We've worked with the schools. They do provide a crossing guard where necessary. We've also changed some parking and drop-off areas for parents. So, those things are all available to basically reduce people from having to cross the street. If they do have to cross, it's a much safer environment with the police presence in the area at the start and close of school each day. And like I said, it was mostly prompted by our inability to fill those positions. They're difficult positions to fill because you need someone in the mornings, and then in the afternoon, and in the middle time. Really, they had to just find something else to do. They weren't being paid during that time. So, I can see where it would be difficult for people to want to take on those type of jobs. It worked in all type of weather. Whenever school was open, it just wasn't a very appealing job to many people. So, we made some changes working with the school department to ensure the safety of the children that need to cross in those areas.
Thank you. Anything else with this line item? Okay, moving on. Building Department. Who called the hold on the building department? On the aisle, please.
My question is actually for all of the departments. I noticed that some of our fees in the town are getting high. And my question is, when I was on the planning board 20 years ago, we were always told that we could only assess fees for the amount of work that was being done. If it costs our town planer $50 to do something, then that was what we would to charge. And I'm just wondering, seeing some of the prices of some of these fees that are out there now, are our departments still abiding by that? Or is that something that the planning department does because they think it's fair?
Mr. Carrero, are you able to answer that?
So, occasionally, more so than often, the departments go out to other communities and vet the process on not only what they charge for fees, you know, and bring that back to the board, and then make decisions to either sometimes lower the fees, upgrade, update the fees. But there is a competitive process with other communities, like in kind to Dartmouth, comparables that are looked at.
Thank you. Anything else with building department? Okay, we're clearing that hold. The next one. Department of Public Works expense. Who called that hold, please? Yep, I missed the schools. But let's do Department of Public Work expense. Just lower it while I'm here, and I'll go back and get the schools.
Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct 8. Just a simple question. The Highway Division budget has increased significantly, and I was just curious why.
Mr. Barber, are you here to talk about the Highway Department budget and its increase, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, the, you know, the past few years, we have overspent our maintenance budgets. And this year, we, to be fiscally responsible, we increased the line item for most of our maintenance budgets, for vehicle maintenance, to equal what we've been spending. So, that's most of our increases. I do the, to those increases.
Thank you. Anything else on Highway Department expense? Let's go back to schools. Who called the hold on schools? Right there, please.
Thank you, Margaret Sweet, Precinct 9. I actually have two questions. The first one is, how much money in the school budget is being spent on DEI indoctrination? And I'd like to know how much.
What is your second question as well, please?
Has the school committee ever been audited?
Has the school committee been audited? And DEI programming. Mr. Kylie, do you want to talk about DEI programming and what's been spent on that?
I'll have to make a little adjustment. As far, hello, June Saban McGuire. I'm the superintendent in the Dartmouth Schools. Pleased to be here. As far as indoctrination, there is no indoctrination going on in the Dartmouth Public Schools. And I just want to say that the work that we do around diversity, equity, inclusion, in belonging is work that's really important to the school district, and it's really about creating a school district that does, in fact, honor those words for what they actually represent. And so, so thank you. Mr. Kylie, we're going to.
What was the second question?
The second was, has the school committee been audited?
So, the school committee's a public elected body and not subject to audit.
Thank you. And I have another question before you go. Let's make sure I can get all my holds cleared, please.
I promised my last question. Jacqueline Figurito, Precinct 8. I was just curious, because a few years ago, a referendum was passed for a surtax called the Millionaire's Tax. And I understand that for roads and, you know, DPW expense-type projects, there's a specific formula. For the schools, there is not. And as far as I know, the state program that probably Dartmouth Schools takes advantage of is the free meals. And I was curious if there's anything else we get from that Millionaire's Tax.
Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, the Millionaire's Tax has assisted in funding, as you mentioned, the free meal program for all students, which does apply to breakfast and lunch for all our students. The other use of those funds, some of those funds were allocated to Chapter 70 funding of the Student Opportunity Act. However, Dartmouth, because of the Chapter 70 formula, really doesn't benefit from that. So, I guess the answer is no.
Thank you. Right here, please.
Hi, Jeannie Tripp, Precinct 7. I'm just curious, what percentage of the school budget is funded through DESI? And what exactly are the requirements you're restricted to work within to fulfill those needs to their budget? Because I know back during COVID, the small charter schools in New Bedford, you could go online and you could look at the mass funding from DESI, and a small charter school received more than the entire town of Dartmouth at that time. And I'm going back to 2023 because I actually had written all those numbers down, but we weren't allowed to talk about it at the school committee meeting. So, just my question. What is your regulation by DESI toward curriculum? And what is the percentage of our funding that comes from them?
Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, I guess first, in terms of the funding from DESI. So, DESI doesn't fund any of our operating budget. They do provide us with some grant funds. So, grant funds for students with special needs, grant funds for students with low-income status, and a few other small grants totaling a little more than $2 million. But none of our operating budget is funded directly from DESI. The state, on the other hand, does fund the town, provides Chapter 70 funding, which is, doesn't come directly to the school department. It goes directly to the town, but it is in support of education, and it's about $10 million.
So, I think I've cleared all the holds. Are we? I'm sorry, Ms. Sugiduchi. Let's see your hand.
Sugiduchi, Precinct 9. I know this might sound like a silly question, but with all the emphasis on new technology, I noticed that the text and library books, there was a 76% increase. So, could you explain that, please?
So, that, the, thank you. So, that increase is largely due to the alignment to our district strategic plan. And if you were to go and look at our district strategic plan, our number one, our highest priority is around high-quality research-based resources. And that's something that we've had to pay a lot of attention to, especially in the last few years. We are committed to looking at resources at all levels, really pre-K to 12 here in Dartmouth. We have implemented a new, well, new, we're going into our fourth year, new math resource at the elementary level. We, next year, we're launching a new literacy resource at the elementary level. We've actually invested right here at Dartmouth High School in a new library of reconfiguration and refurbished it, and it's beautiful. So, we've invested some funding there. But really, it's mostly related to an investment in high-quality research-based resources that we really needed to pay attention to. And as I said, big priority for our district strategic plan.
Thank you. All right, so now I think I've cleared all the holds. Are we ready to vote on the budget? All in favor of Article 10 as presented, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, I would entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting? Hold on. Go ahead. Yes?
Amendment before we dissolve. I want to thank the members of Town Meeting for showing up today. I want to also thank you for your respectful discussion. I want to thank Nate Silva for bringing to our attention "There's Another Way", and for starting the discussion that it's on us. And a year from now, when we're sitting here in June 2026, Nate, we're going to make some changes, and we're going to look at it seriously.
Thank you all. Thank you all for hanging.
I also thank you, Madam Moderator, for today's work.
Well, thank you for hanging in there today with me and grinding this out. So, I would entertain a motion to dissolve? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We are dissolved at 1:38. Well done, everybody.